We started here. Now we are. All right. Today is March 29, 2022 for a combined work session and special meeting, calling to order. Just notice to the public that city council may vote to go into executive session for any of the agendized items for legal advice. Roll call, please.
Mayor Deezee.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Solis.
Preston.
Councilmember Shimoney. Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
And one more call for Councilmember Shimoney. Mayor, it looks like he's having a little bit of difficulty. I keep seeing him drop in and out of the online meeting.
All right, then I won't call him for the pledge. How about Councilmember Solis? Would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Please stand if you can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And how about Councilmember McCarthy for our mission statement?
Thank you, Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor, our land acknowledgement, if you don't mind?
Thank you, Mayor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We're down to agenda item number four, our public participation. And we do have a few here in the works. And we'll start with Kristi Zeller, please.
This one?
Yes.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Kristi Zeller. I am the Executive Director of the Haven Montessori Charter School and a 23-year resident of Flagstaff. It's so nice to see you all in person after so long. Thank you for the opportunity for our school to submit public comment in support of the city's poo-in-the-park campaign. Before I introduce our student speakers to you, I would like to thank Vice Mayor Daggett for heeding the call of our concerned young citizens. Guadalupe Park is down the road from our school on Clay Avenue. After years and years of dodging piles of dog poo on the field, our students asked the adults at Haven, who can we talk to about this? We reached out to the Vice Mayor, and she came to Haven to hear the concerns of our students last fall. The result of that meeting is the current poo-in-the-park campaign developed with the Water Services Department. This effort seeks to clean up our parks and trails and protect the groundwater of the Rio de Flag. Our school community would like to express its gratitude for the City of Flagstaff's willingness to listen to all constituents and work together to develop solutions. Our students are also very appreciative of the opportunity to freely use the word poo at school. So, thank you for that. I am deeply proud of our students and their desire to change our world for the better. Dr. Maria Montessori said, "The child is both a hope and a promise for mankind." And I'll introduce them, and then you tell them what to do. Okay. And I'd like to introduce you to Owen Joseph Chuck, who is in fifth grade. Havik Thornton in sixth grade in our upper elementary Ponderosa classroom.
Thank you so much, Zeller. And Owen?
Have you ever been walking in the park and stepped in dog poo? My name is Owen. I'm 10 years old, in fifth grade at Haven Montessori School, and I like to ride my bike. Poo-in-the-park became a thing when our class had a class council meeting. One of the problems was that there was dog poo in our local park where we have recess every day. After a bit, Vice Mayor Becky Daggett came to talk to our school. Then, a little while later, we learned about the poo-in-the-park program. Yesterday, I was walking near our school, and there was dog poop on the sidewalk and in people's yards. This is a problem that needs to be fixed. Therefore, please do something about this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Owen. And Havik?
Poop is very gross. Do you want to step in it every time you go to the park? My name is Havik. I'm 11 years old. I'm in sixth grade and go to Haven Montessori School. Things I like to do are ride and run and ride my bike. Leaving poop in the park is bad because it can pollute groundwater. It's unhealthy to be around, and it washes into the Rio de Flag, which then kills a lot of native life. When I go for walks, sometimes there's poop in gardens and even the street. In conclusion, if there's anything you can do to help, please do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Havik. Thank you for all being here. And this is really great. I also have a card from Lisa Deem and Megan White.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name's Lisa Deem. I'm with Water Services, and we are spearheading the poo-in-the-park campaign. It's an issue we're partnering with Parks Department for this project. And what we're trying to do is change attitudes. Rather than enforcement, we're looking at life enhancement and encouraging people to want to make their home and their environment a better place. I'd like to introduce to you Megan White, who is an NAU Public Health Intern, Environmental Health, and she is spearheading this project. And we'll talk a little bit more about the project with you.
Thank you for having me. I'm Meg, and I'm an NAU Public Health Intern. So, our goal here with the poo-in-the-park campaign is to increase positive attitudes surrounding picking up dog waste. And we hope that subsequently, this will decrease the amount of waste that is left in our public spaces and our city parks. And so, we're partnering with Haven Montessori Charter School and Marshall Elementary School, and we're hosting a number of activities with them. We're hosting a poster contest that ends this Friday. We're going to have the winning posters posted at the parks. So, it will be a community encouragement and creative works created by our lovely students. And as part of our data collection, we're having a field trip activity that the students are participating in, where they search the parks, flag the instances of waste, map it, and then we'll post the maps at those parks so the community is aware of how much waste is being left. And then, hopefully, we'll see a decrease over time. And the students are engaged as well. And we hope to put out some more community outreach efforts in terms of promotional materials, online and in person. And yeah, we hope that through all of these various activities, we can help to maintain the health and beauty of our community in Flagstaff.
We will be having a public survey as well that will be posted tomorrow on our website and at the parks. So, people visiting the park can take the survey on their attitudes towards poo and waste in the park. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. All right. With that, we are down to agenda item number five, which is our review of draft agenda for the April 5, 2022 city council meeting. Council, do we have any concerns, questions about the agenda for next week? Councilmember Solis?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a request to staff with regard to my fair item on the Schultz-Pass property. I understand there's an existing report. I think it may be a staff report or a case study that has been done a couple of years ago or so by Ms. Langley. See if that document could be revived and shared with Mayor and Council before next week's meeting for a more informative decision-making while we discuss the fair item. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Anything further for next week's meeting? Do we have Councilmember Shimoney online now? Is he still having some difficulties? Make sure he...
Mayor, I am here. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Sorry, my computer just died as I said that to check. So, thank you, Councilmember. With that, then, we are down to agenda item number six, our City Manager Report.
Mayor, I think I just saw a reference of an additional public comment. Am I getting that right? I saw it in the chat.
Yes. Mayor, would you be willing to accept a comment from Tamara Lawless?
Yes, I'd be happy to. We'll reopen agenda item number four and go back and, yeah, have her speak.
Hi. Apologies for the miscommunication on that. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tamara Lawless, Water Conservation Manager. I'm just here to invite you to participate in this month's annual Water Awareness Month festivities, since it's almost April, as well as the Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. The water conservation team will be at Heritage Square this Friday from 5:00 to 8:00 promoting the pledge and also handing out water conservation goodies. And we also have some really fun custom lawn games. So, please stop by and say hello if you're going to be out and about on Friday. We are also hosting tours of the Rio de Flag Water Reclamation Plant on Saturday, April 9, at 9:30 a.m. and 11 a.m. And I'll go ahead and send a follow-up email this week to remind you of those times if you'd like to sign up. And if any members of the public would like to attend those, you can send our team an email at savewater@flagstaffaz.gov. As an incentive for everyone who participates in the Mayor's Challenge this year, we are offering the option for a custom water conservation kit that comes in a bag, and you can request your own custom items like high-efficiency showerheads and aerators. We also have these moisture meters that you can use to check soil moisture levels outside and inside. We have things like shower timers. So, all that info is going to be up on our Water Awareness Month website, and we'll also have it posted in all of our social media. And then, our team's also going to be at tabling events throughout the month that are already existing, like the Flagstaff Mountain Film Festival and Earth Day. So, keep an eye out for us. Come and say hello. Take the pledge. You have to take it April 1 or later. It only counts during April at mywaterpledge.com. And we're hoping for a good showing again this year. That's it. Thank you so much for the time.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Lawless. All righty, then. We're going back to the agenda item six, our City Manager Report.
Well, and thanks for allowing that last public comment. Very important message. So, thanks. The report this time is quite abbreviated because you had a report just last week. We have two work sessions back to back, so it just worked out that way. I do have one item that I would like some quick input on. And then, there are two monthly reports that supplement my report. And I was, those include the Economic Vitality and Information Technology Divisions. And we can get a quick overview, a high-level overview from members of those divisions here in just a second, talking about the great things happening with their divisions respectively. With regard, then, to what I want to call out for discussion, and I don't know if you've had an opportunity to read it, but we do this every year. This is housekeeping. It regards a possible primary property tax levy increase. And with that possible increase always comes a 60-day notice that's pursuant to state statutes. We do not have to do anything if there's no desire to be forwarding a question in November regarding a possible primary property tax increase. I want to clarify, this does not concern anything that we're currently talking about with respect to a potential bond measure, which would be applicable to the second-tier property tax, a completely different, same topic, different portion of the tax structure. This concerns the primary property tax levy. Just as way of background, council did not elect to pursue that a year ago, not surprisingly. So, there was no notice, and there was no discussion of it. We're in front of you again this year, just to check in, our current budget proposal, which will be talked about a little bit on Thursday of this week and then at your retreat in April. I will note, does not include a recommendation for an increase in primary property tax levy. So, we've made no assumptions regarding this, but it's before you now for your input. And glad to answer any questions, or we can have Rick Tatter give any details if necessary.
Thank you, City Manager. Open up for discussion, Council, in the direction. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. At this point, I don't really have an opinion on if we will or will not raise the primary tax rate. We'll get into that in the budget discussions, as you mentioned. But I do support putting this public notice out so that we can make a decision. Because if we don't do that, we won't be able to make a decision. So, I do support putting out the possibility that we will change the tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Others? I personally am not interested in sending out the notice for a property tax increase. So, but if the council so desires. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. It seems like last time, we decided to go ahead and put it out there, advertise it, but then we decided not to increase the tax rate. Isn't that right?
That's my recollection. Others can correct me on it, but I believe that was the case.
I think this time around, I'm not really interested in putting out the notice, but I could be persuaded because it leaves at least the opportunity for discussion.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Others? Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. I think putting the notice out is okay. It allows us for the discussion. I don't know what will end with that discussion, but leaving it open, I would support that.
All right. Well, we have two and two on this front, so I'll need to hear from other members of council if this will... Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am not interested in sending out that notice at this point.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis.
I'm not either.
And Councilmember Aslan is not either, so that settles that. Thank you, City Manager, for bringing this forward.
Absolutely. I think that Councilmember Shimoney, I thought I saw a comment posted.
Oh, Councilmember Shimoney. Welcome to jump in.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager. You know, at this point, it's a moot point, but I was just going to say I'm okay either way. And I prefer to give us the option. But I think we've had a majority voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Councilmember McCarthy?
I guess I'm going to express that I'm a little disappointed that we're making a decision without having an intelligent discussion about if it makes sense or not. And don't interpret that to mean that I want to increase the tax rate, because I probably won't in the end. But I think it's inappropriate to close the barn door before we decide if we want to go on a horse ride or not.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy for your input. All right.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for that discussion. In the direction, we will proceed accordingly. As I mentioned, we have monthly reports from both Economic Vitality. I think that's a, I think that's the February report. And then, Information Technology, I believe that one is for March. Heidi Hansen, or somebody from Economic Vitality, can you kick this off?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Heidi Hansen, Economic Vitality Director and interim Deputy City Manager. I normally would be with you online, and I'm not tonight, which is awesome. So, I'm going to speak to this instead of share screen. I didn't download it on this computer, and all those things come back to you after you haven't done it for two years. So, I apologize. But you did see the report, so I just wanted to let you know some highlights. One of the things I wanted to talk about that I was really excited about is our airport rescue firefighters last month had to deal with 14 inches of snow. And I don't know if you all know what they have to do to actually open that runway to give us a 333, but they did it. And so, we had very few cancellations. None of them were because of the runway. It was all because of the fact that flights were just being delayed throughout the nation. So, I wanted to hats off to our ARF team. Also, wanted to talk about a new shuttle program. If you haven't heard about it, it's $2. So, you can actually go on the app, and you can ask for them to pick you up at your home and take you right over to the airport. This is on a grant that Mountain Lion receives, so it doesn't mean it's going to go on forever. It will go through the end of June, which is perfect, because in July, our paid parking program will be beginning. Doesn't mean it won't continue. It just means we have to find funding. No, we do not have any funding for this, so please don't ask me to find it or for Greg to find it. But we will actually be working with them on other grants and things like that to see if we can continue with that. We also put up a really, really huge banner in the airports. If you've been down there, it's to give people the idea that they can do the $2 shuttle. It is not a permanent banner, though. So, just so you all know about that. In payments continue to rise. We were so excited. We actually beat last year's in payments by 1,000. So, one of the things I can't emphasize more is the fact that we did not lose any service during this entire pandemic. It is a huge, huge task to not lose service at a small airport like ours. So, I just want to say again, thanks to the airport team and all of our marketing efforts with Discover Flagstaff for keeping these flights going. Some other things I wanted to share was beautification. They continue to do just a crazy, great job. Eliza and Jana are amazing. They completed a project at the juvenile court, and they did a bunch of, it's called the Hope Receiving Center, and they did murals and things like that. If you haven't been able to take a look at that on the report, please do. It shows really some cool artwork, and I think you'll be excited to see that. There's a list of the things that they've actually continued to work on, and every time they complete a project, they share that with us each month. So, please look at that. But the list is like 15 long, and they're checking boxes. So, I just wanted to share that with you. For Park Flag, our parking program, they continue to not only create more parking and have more lots, they have them kiosk, and they actually started advertising those so that people are aware when they come downtown. We also have what we call a VIP commuter program that Dave McIntyre helped put together with NATA and Mountain Lion. Dave's with us tonight. And that is to let the people that work downtown that know that they have an employee permit, that they can actually also decide, I think I want to ride the bus today and come into work, so that they don't have to take up any type of parking. So, we're going to continue to message that to the downtown partners so that they will message that to their employees. In business attraction, we are excited that Whitehall Industries continues to keep moving along, and they actually have been a successful applicant of our job creation incentive. They will receive $25,000 to continue to assist us in this community and to continue to create jobs. Dave's here if you have any more questions on that. And then, just real quick, there was a council tour that some of you were able to do, and I'm sorry I wasn't able to join you that day over at NACET, which is our entrepreneur center. And it looks like you guys had a great time, and you saw a lot about what's going on. The occupancy there is almost full. It's full at the incubator and almost full at the accelerator. Again, hats off to our partners at Moonshot, and again, Dave and his team for making sure that this is a priority. And then, with our library, we actually created, we've gotten so many grants at the library, and I don't know if people know this. Not only do we work with our Grants and Contracts Department, or Section, rather, they write, a lot of our library staff write their own also. So, we're all doing it, right? And they actually have, they've got a Wonder Books grant, and it actually allows students to actually download and get more information, learn to download things on their own devices, because you know they're on it 24/7. And then, we're also doing a huge library renovation at the Grand Canyon Library, because as you might remember, we also handle all of the county libraries. So, it's not enough that we have the main and East Flag Library. We have all the county libraries. And so, we finished a big renovation two years ago at Tubus City, and now we're moving on to Grand Canyon. And then, last but not least, tourism. The metrics are outstanding, and I will tell you hats off to our stakeholders and our partners, and above all, Discover Flagstaff for continuing to market this destination. Our occupancy, our average daily rate, and our RevPAR were all in the plus. 9.8 for occupancy is a crazy number. Average daily rate, 7.8, and RevPAR, 18.4%. So, what it means is we are filling rooms and we are driving rate, which is a really great method. We also had 19 print articles and 165 digital articles. 165 digital articles in one month, all about Flagstaff. Thank you, Discover Flagstaff, and the great team that's doing all of that. And last but not least, because you know this is chock full of some great things, we are now promoting, starting to promote festivals again, so much that we've actually created an entire new logo and brand because we care about the fact that they have been, you know, really struggling these last two years, and we want them to have the most success possible. So, if you're talking to an event planner or whatever, send them our way. We're happy to help message their festival, their event. And we've got new branding, and we're really excited to go with that. We also just started kicking off our city recruitment campaign with really fun things like Cool Careers, Cool People, Cool Mountains. You'll see more of this. We are now in the process of getting our own staff to be models for photography, as well as for a video that we'll be showing you shortly, hopefully within a month, that talks about how we take recruitment and people joining City of Flagstaff, Team Flagstaff, seriously. So, that's what I have for you tonight, and I just want to thank you for your continued support of this division. And if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you. I much appreciate it. Council, do we have any questions at this time? Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. It's not a question, but just a big thank you for all of your work and your team's work. Our town is thriving, and we couldn't do without you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Appreciate that. And if they're not tuned in tonight, I will always send that note out.
Done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And next, we are going to hear from our information technology team. They may be having technical difficulties. Yeah. Let's do this. Please feel free to give it a read. It's attached to the report, and we can have them touch on that next time around, if that's okay.
That sounds great.
Yeah, thank you.
I really appreciate how thorough these reports are from all of our divisions. It's really great to be able to know what's going on and be able to recognize all the accomplishments and work everyone is doing.
I agree, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. With that, we are down to agenda item number seven, A Robust Workforce Development System, the Creation, the Functional Operations, and the Possibilities. Mr. Saltonstall?
Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. It's wonderful to see everybody here tonight. I'm going to pause while we find the...
It's lunch break time? Awesome!
A little time warp here. It happens.
Excellent.
All right. Well, again, thank you very much for having me. My name's John Saltonstall. I'm the Business Retention and Expansion Manager for the City of Flagstaff. I'm also the Vice Chair of our Local Area Workforce Development Board. Going to be presenting on a robust workforce development system. I'd like to acknowledge, before getting into this, that I've got Mr. Billy Francis with us tonight. He's our, the Executive Director for the Workforce Development Board, and he's going to assist with part of the presentation as well. I think also online, I can't see if he's here, but Dr. Aaron Taber is the Vice, is the Chair, rather. I'm the Vice Chair. He's the Chair. And he's available for any questions as they arise. So, this is my roadmap of the presentation, so you know where we're going. We're going to, I'm going to provide an overview of the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, known as WIOA. We're going to talk about the four programs and related partners. We'll talk a little bit about the Regional Cradle to Career Continuum efforts, and then I'll have the new Executive Director speak, and he'll talk to you about how to facilitate workforce wins, because I think that's going to be important for all of us. So, all roads lead to WIOA. I'm going to just plant that seed now. We'll come back to that later. This is language from the act itself. It's an excerpt from the 2014 WIOA Act, which replaces the former Workforce Investment Act. This language orients and structures. It drives all subsequent workforce activities nationally and locally. This talks about the general process. It is trickle-down. Money's coming from the federal government to the states, and... government to the states and separately to indigenous nations. States develop a plan to meet the workforce needs based on that federal legislation and the local conditions, and subsequently, the states disperse those monies to local areas. Here, the system in Arizona is the Arizona At Work Innovative Workforce Solutions. It's known locally as the Arizona At Work Coconino County Workforce Development Board. As such, you're going to get this because I'm repeating it, but Arizona At Work Coconino County is the brand. The board convenes all service providers and has essentially functional supervision of the network of partners, ensuring that the funding's being used as it's intended. Our comprehensive One Stop exists to help the job seeker. The One Stop is supposed to represent all of the services that are available to the job seeker. There's a long list of services. I'm happy to read it for you, but it's long, and it's all designed for everything that you could imagine. Interview skills, resume updating, and everything in between. Employers may contact the business services representatives who are available for employers and for industry. Department of Economic Security provides business service representatives at the state level, and the local area may also hire business service representatives who will interface with the employers. They'll post jobs on the statewide Arizona Job Connection. They help with job fairs and are generally there to serve, generally serve to find the qualified people that the businesses need. And then the board is the place where industry and partners meet. It's an opportunity for the board to learn about the successes and challenges of the partners and of industry professionals. The board can take on various initiatives to meet unique area issues. As you may recall, last year, the board brought the virtual reality headsets to the region to help with career exploration and job training. That's one of those types of initiatives that came directly from the board. Now we're going to get into the four core programs. And so I'll just list them here. We've got Title 1B, Adult Dislocated Workers and Youth, Education Literacy. I'm going to get into each one of those in terms of who the targets are, what the goals are, and who's delivering those services. So we'll start with Title 1B. This is about adult and dislocated workers and youth out of school, ages 16 to 24, and in school at 14 to 21. In this area, we see the efforts of the Arizona At Work Coconino County Career Center. We've got Perkins Grant Funding here as well for career and technical education programs, which are managed by Coconino Community College and CAVIOT. CAVIOT is the Coconino Association for Vocations, Industry, and Technology. CAVIOT, incidentally, has been the Joint Technical Education District for Coconino County since 2001. That means they're delivering all of these programs to all the school districts, to Williams, Page, Grand Canyon, Fredonia, Moccasin, and Flagstaff Unified School Districts. The Internship Network, the Career Exploration Series, the Youth Talent Pipelines, efforts with Launch, RelWest, and WestEd, all are efforts that also fit into this category. Title 1B really provides a means to innovatively connect youth to work experiences such as work-based learning opportunities, internships, apprenticeships, and the like. The in-school age group is a great opportunity to help students get their first experiences in the workforce, as we can connect them to summer jobs, for example. Adult Education Literacy. These services target individuals in need of basic education with low basic skills and low educational attainment. The services also facilitate English language acquisition for eligible learners to achieve competence in reading, writing, speaking, and comprehension. The services also deliver math skills needed to attain high school credentialing and transition to post-secondary education and employment. Coconino Community College is the service provider for this. Title III, Wagner-Preiser Act of 1930. This established a nationwide system of public employment offices known as the Employment Service. The Arizona Department of Economic Security is the service provider for all things Wagner-Preiser. Title IV, this is vocational rehab. This is also serviced by Department of Employment Services, Economic Services, rather, DES. And the primary goal here is to help people with disabilities to gain employment and to grow their skills. So cradle to career. There are a great number of resources to help teens and adults navigate the workforce development system. But what happens in the early years of every human being contributes to vast and long-lasting impacts. Councilmember Salas shared this information from her attendance at a workforce development conference last year, that one of the most cited reasons that people left the workforce recently relates to childcare and the inability to find a place for pre-kindergarten children to go. Facilities have closed, which also means it's more difficult to find that childcare than it, than it used to be. But that's not all. Childcare issues result in an estimated $1.7 billion loss annually to Arizona's economy. Related absences and employer turnover costs an estimated $1.42 billion annually to Arizona's employers. Safe, high-quality care for pre-kindergarten-aged children is critical to help parents and caregivers to return to the workforce. The efforts of Elevate Pre-K, there are pioneering efforts that will pay dividends for present and future. Supporting a sustainable pre-K support system is critical, as pre-K efforts are integral to a resilient and thriving community. I jumped the gun on that. Moving forward, incorporating pre-K into the dialogue is also one of the hallmarks of a sustainable economic development program. So that's a lot of words. I'm going to complement that now with a bunch of pictures. So these pictures are going to show some of the efforts that we've undertaken over the last few years, and here we go. So this is a picture of one of a law enforcement initiative from 2019. This is a picture from the career days related to the law enforcement initiative with Lieutenant C. in the SWAT vehicle with one of the groups of the high school students. Here, we have another part of the law enforcement initiative that included supporting the recognition of National Police Week and National Peace Offer Memorial Day, which occur typically the second week of May. You may recognize a few people in this, in this picture. We've got Chief Musselman holding the proclamation for National Police Week. I think there are a couple of council members in there, too. This is one of our industrial arts, technology, youth talent pipelines, summit convening students, teachers, administrators, and industry, all to enhance the existing talent pipelines. On the left, we have a Coconino High School career and technical education student demonstrating his mechanical hand at another summit that took place at CCC during Manufacturers Month. On the right is a, the Manufacturing One-Pager, as we call it, which directly helps manufacturers to find the interns they need. Here are a couple of pictures. You might recognize some of those folks here. On the left, this is our, both pictures are our business services team. On the left, we have a picture of the team receiving a certificate of recognition for best practices for service delivery. This was related to the Employer Resource Events. A few of our other team members here on Team Flagstaff participated in this, including the Director of Discover Flagstaff, Trace Ward, and our Interim Deputy City Manager, Heidi Hansen.
How did you call it, "Pace"?
Well, things change, you know, pandemic, whatnot. Anywho, on the right, we've got the business services team receiving a Workforce Arizona Council Award for Excellence in collaboration from the Governor's Office as well. Here we have one of the flyers from the business services team. It's going to be too small to read, but it came from 2019, when the business services was really firing on all cylinders. We were collaborating well, working as a great team. We've got the logos here. Folks are going to recognize Goodwill Industries of Central and Northern Arizona, Coconino County, Greater Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce, Community College, Coconino Community College, City of Flagstaff, Department of Economic Security, and CAVIOT. Great team, great partnerships. Now, this is a picture from this weekend. Ironwood Forestry's Third Annual Field Day Ruck. Eli Jensen of Ironwood Forestry puts this event on every year, inviting forestry students to hike eight or nine miles through the community with weighted backpacks. They finish up meeting with employers and recruiters for a post-ruck barbecue. This unique event even attracted a representative from an Idaho forestry company, private outfit, who wanted to come down and attend this event. Councilmember Salas brought this to our attention and was there supporting as well. It was a great event. We're hoping that the board will be able to assist Ironwood Forestry with future certification needs, as we know that that's in the future. And there's still more to talk about, including the Pipe Trades Association locating an apprenticeship program here in Flagstaff, again with the help of Councilmember Salas, Econo President and CEO Gail Jackson, and Business Attraction Manager Jack Fitchett. Great, great efforts all around. So here we are, facilitating workforce wins. It said, "All roads lead to WIOA." In order to access the WIOA funds, one must go through the local area. That means connecting with any one of the providers mentioned so far. You can also go through the Executive Director, Mr. Billy Francis. Mr. Francis has served in all capacities through the workforce system under the Workforce Investment Act and under the current Workforce Innovative, Innovation Opportunity Act, with experience delivering workforce solutions in Louisiana and Arkansas. A tremendous asset to every community where he resides. I'd love to introduce Mr. Billy Francis.
All right. Thank you. Well, good afternoon, Mayor Deasy and Vice Mayor Daggett and Chair, Councilmembers. My name is Billy Francis, and from the introduction of Mr. Saltynstall, no, I have not got yet accustomed to the snow. Everything that John told you today, you must have a lot of questions of where do we go from here? And so what I want to give you a basic understanding is, we have two customers in WIOA. We have the community of Coconino, we have the residents of Coconino County, and we have the businesses of Coconino County. And that's the two people that we are mandated to serve. I heard a question a couple of weeks ago on how can the City of Flagstaff help with the initiative? That's a, that's a complicated question, and here's why. Because you're an employer of Coconino County. It is our job to serve you. It is our job to use our workforce dollars to make sure that you're meeting all your employment needs, to make sure that we have a skilled workforce in order to meet all your vacancies. And so let's talk about a couple of things. I heard somebody mention NACET. I too went to NACET. I went and spoke to them, because they needed to know how the local workforce board could serve them. They're a group of employers who are trying to get off the ground. We get millions of dollars in Coconino County to ensure that they have everything that they need to get off the ground and sustain theirselves, sustain themselves through all difficulties. And so when you ask what the local workforce board can do for you, what I come to do today to do is just anything that you know about workforce, anything that you've heard over the years, I want you to go blank. And I want you to think about all the opportunities that we can have. If you can think about something that is going on in Flagstaff that you would love to get more educated individuals in and more skills, if you can think about an employer who can use on the job training or customized training or some funding in order to become more creative, or to, or a group of individuals who can recruit and filter through the pipeline and assist you with just interviewing these candidates, because you don't necessarily have the time to do that. That's who we are. That's the local workforce. If you're going to bring any business to Coconino County, you need to have three groups of individuals together to be successful, in my experience. You need to have economic development, you need to have higher education, and you need to have your local workforce. If you bring that golden triangle together in any meeting when you're trying to impact business, you're going to be successful. In Louisiana, we had the opportunity when Katrina hit, we had the opportunity, we had a drought in power alignment. So Clinco and all the different companies came together. They got with our local workforce board. We got with the local community college. We put a customized training package together. We put $3 million into it. We was pumping out a, a, a power alignment so that we can serve the community. If you can think of an idea to do, that's why we're here. That's why we're workforce innovation. We're never going to tell you no. We have two jobs. Either we see it through, or we collaborate with our partners to figure it out. But we're never going to shut the door on a, on a business owner, and we're never going to shut the door on the people of Coconino County. And so what I want you all to know, I'm not asking anyone on the council to memorize anything that John just said. But I wanted, I'm glad that John gave you the foundation. What I need you to walk away with today is knowing when all roads lead to WIOA. And that's any time that you have a group of individuals that are looking for jobs, or you have a group of employers who need employers, employees. Your local workforce does not get any pats on the backs for turning money back in. We have to spend all our allocated dollars, and we spend it on our employers, and we spend it on training our community. Now, I don't know what's been going on in the years before, but from the pictures, we've been doing a wonderful job. We're looking to continue those efforts. The young lady that was talking about the airport and you have jobs, let us help. I have about $150,000 that I'm going to put into the community and put into employers. Why? Because they need us to do that. We're, we're overcoming COVID. Mom and pops are trying to keep their doors open. Big industry need to ramp up more employees. Give us an opportunity to do that. So midbusting. Yes, we can. Ms. Regina, you want us to do something? Yes, we can. Ms. Sweet, yes, we can. Mr. McCarty, absolutely. Yes, we can. Mayor Dearie, of course we can. We'll be there. Ms. Daggett, sure. No, that's not out of the question. Workforce will be there. And Mr. Oslin, yes. That, that thought that just went through your head? Yes, we can. And so that's why we're going to midbust. We're going to be there for the community, and we're going to be there for the employers. And guys, if we don't have the money, it's our job to go find it. It's our job to partner with the city to make it happen. It's our job to partner with the state to make it happen. Our job is to work alongside you while fulfilling your, fulfilling your needs. Our job is to also work alongside you when we have to serve the community. John mentioned Ironwood Forestry's in the youth. When our team hears youth and opportunity, we need to come running. We need to get back to summer employment. We need to identify all the opportunities that we can put our youth to work. Before I left my last job, we put 350 youth to work in the summer. That's how we generate our pipeline. That's how we get our community excited, excited. That's how we give our employers the pipeline they need to be successful. All roads lead to WIOA because we're the only group of individuals that do not need a pat on the back, and we don't need any kudos. We're here to enhance any conversation, and we're here to see through any projects. And that's what our dollars are for, and that's why we're here. Thank you for your time, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. Council, questions? Comments? Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. I am wondering how businesses find out about you and your wonderful services.
Absolutely. Great question, Ms. Sweet. Every state that I work in, you often hear that WIOA is the best-kept secret. And so we all know that word 'em out is one thing, but I know here in Coconino, we just have to get our, our, our media up, our social media. We need to get on the news. We need to get in the newspaper. We have to do a better job of informing our employers not only that we're here, but what are our benefits, what the benefits are to us being here. And that's the questions I've been asking since I get here. So Ms. Sweet, you can, I can guarantee you that you'll see a change in that direction.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You, Councilmember Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to Flagstaff.
Thank you, Ms. Daggett.
What, um, what's going to be one of the top things that you start with?
Oh, great question. Ms. Daggett, what I want to do is, uh, every, since I've been here for three months, the questions have been from the local employers, employers, kind of what does the workforce do for, what can they do for me? So what I want to do is I want to take some of our funding that we have and I want to put it into our local workforce. And so that means that I either want to help with training of some internal staff or I want to go ahead and put it, customize some training where we can feel. So my biggest thing right now is to build our team because we need a team to do this and put money back into the workforce through our employers. So that's my, uh, that's my big thing that I'm going to do. We're going to try to help. I think John and I are working with Joycom, and so we're going to definitely try to help them get some staff and get them trained with some on-the-job training.
Thank you. And then is there a web address that employers could go to? Or should they go to the?
Yes, and so that's another great question. So we're gonna, we don't have a website exactly at the moment that employers can go to. But, uh, give me a little time and let me work on that and I'll make sure we get something on your desk. Come on, sir.
Can just tag-team this answer. Thanks for the question and just want to point out that the city of Flagstaff or Economic Development Offices and Discover Flagstaff Partners can absolutely help to elevate this message and get this information out there. I know as the BRNE guy, I certainly am interested in having all this information and getting it out to all the businesses. We've had a couple of opportunities to meet with businesses already, and it's been very encouraging, very inspiring, just to be able to get in there with them. So we want to bring that to the, to all of the city of Flagstaff and to the whole local area of the Coconino County.
Absolutely. And, and what John said is absolutely correct. We're not trying to reinvent any wills. We're not going to go out and create any new relationships. What we want to do is make sure we, we tag-team with them and serve the needs of the employers have identified with them and we'll put some money behind that as well. So, great job, partner. Appreciate that.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do, um, have to, uh, and thank you, Mr. Francis, before my question to you and to Mr. Salt and Stall. I have a, a follow-up answer to Ms. Councilmember Sweet's question. Before COVID, the Arizona work used to conduct quarterly business services, kind of half-day gathering for, for, for businesses and also the service providers. So it's kind of like where, where all the partners meet and identify. It's just sharing of information and also sharing of resources. And hopefully we, you know, the, the Arizona work will be able to revive those, those, uh, efforts. Also, um, I, I want to provide a space for Mr. Salt and Stall, who's also the, our, uh, Chair for our Excellence, Excellence in Workforce Committee. Efforts that has been done in the last three years. I talked about the, the pilot project with, with, uh, electric vehicle maintenance.
Yes.
And then since automotive, there was an event at Coconino High School and where we partnered with manufacturing and, and also our caveat, caveat programs.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Salas. The list is long of, of the efforts, absolutely. And, you know, I think last time I was up here, I said I was hopeful about the efforts that we, and the opportunities, right? And, um, and I think you're, hopefully tonight, you're recognizing where that hope resides and, and why we can be hopeful, you know? The expertise that Mr. Francis is bringing to the community. And, and I heard him say yes to a whole bunch of stuff that the rest of us didn't even hear, but it was yes, that we can and we're gonna. And that's on top of what we've already done. So it's a, it's a tremendous time for the region and I think we're going to be able to take the things we've done and just make them that much better, absolutely. Thank you.
The key takeaway is our local workforce board, of which I'm, you know, humbled to be part of, is it also creating the talent pipeline of the future workforce, which includes, you know, when it comes to forestry, forestry management and watershed protection, when it comes to electric vehicle maintenance, when it comes to, um, the, um, the, gosh, aerospace, remember catalyst, catalyst, catalyst-based technology when it comes to STEM, STEM-related careers, technology, as well as, as, uh, trades. Now, I, I want Mr. Francis to go on record. Are we going to build that Building Trades Center? That we're going to start with Apprenticeship Training Center in northern Arizona?
Councilmember Salas? Let me get back with you. That's, and, and here's why we say yes to everything, because we're not going to dismiss anything. We're, it's our job to be innovative and it's our job to create opportunity. And, and so until the door is absolutely shut, we're going to continue to look for opportunity and we're going to continue to be innovative. John touched on it. Our service and the people that we serve, it's, it's, it's widespread. And so it's our responsibility, like Ms., uh, what Councilmember Salas said, we're responsible for helping the ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders identify their path. We, we are supposed to be in the local high schools. That's why we do work experience. That's why we do internship. That's why we have apprenticeship. That's why we have on-the-job training. That's why we have all these different opportunities. We, we also help our veterans. We also help unemployed and unemployed and adults. We also help individuals who are in unemployment and exhausted their unemployment. We also help these individuals where COVID helped, you know? We, we help anybody who life has thrown a curveball to. And I'm sorry, that doesn't come with a specified picture. That can be an executive who lost their job because their, their company shut down. That can be somebody, that can be a high schooler in school who need a job during the summer because mom can't make the bills. It's our job to get in there and, and serve all those individuals, as well as serve any employer that we have in Coconino County. And so yes, we say yes to innovation and we say yes to opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Any other questions or comments, council? Well, welcome and thank you so much for the work that you do and we're looking forward to all the exciting new things on the forefront.
Well, definitely look forward to working with each and every one of you and please, uh, if there's an opportunity that's knocking on your door, allow us to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilmember Shimon?
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Before you leave, I am here and I'm tuning in virtually.
Councilmember Shimon comes from on high.
I almost said, is that you, Laura?
It's me. It's me. That's right. Put all of your money in the hat. First of all, welcome and thank you for your, your positive attitude and your support of our, our region and our workforce. And John, thank you for all the work and the presentation you gave. Mr. Francis, I just had a quick question and a comment for both you and, and John. Just an idea, as we were talking just now, in, in the conversation you were having with different councilmembers, have you heard of working alternatives here in Flagstaff?
I have not.
Okay, they work with individuals coming out of jail. And I, I'm not going to attempt to really summarize exactly what they do because I'm sure I'm going to miss something, but they're helping individuals transition back into society, into the workforce, et cetera. And they're, they're partnering with Indian Health Services out of Phoenix. And, and through Indian Health Services, they have funding to help fund three, I think it's 300 hours of work or, or something like, I have to get, I, I'll get you the details.
Okay.
But they're basically looking for job placement for these individuals who might require a little bit of additional oversight and support. But yet there's funding for their work, if that makes sense, from this Indian Health Services Company, Agency out of Phoenix. Is that something you'd be able to help us out with?
Yeah, absolutely. So I've never heard it called that. I mean, in, in workforce, we call it the reentry population. And, uh, that is definitely one of our service groups. So not only can we help you with that, we would love to, to collaborate and help out in any way we can with our funding and with our service with helping them find employment.
That's great. I'm going to send, I'm going to get, uh, information to John and then John can maybe help connect us. But I just really appreciate what you're doing and all of your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimon. Thank you again, Mr. Francis. All right, that brings us down to agenda item number eight, our Butler Fourth Improvements, Butler Avenue Widening Scope Discussion.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name's Jeremy Degater. I am the Project Manager in the Capital Improvements Section here at the city of Flagstaff. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting on the Butler Fourth Improvements Project, also known as Butler Avenue Widening. We're going to take a high-level view of the project as currently imagined. We'll touch base on the project background. We'll spend some time on the enhanced community involvement that we have planned to where we hope to engage with the community, commissions and city council to have conversations upfront about what this project will ultimately look like and making sure that we meet council and the community's expectations for this project. I'll talk a little bit about the project schedule, specifically about the times that we'll be back in front of council for discussions or decision points. And then we'll talk about these immediate next steps that will happen with this project as we move it forward into design. The Butler Fourth Project is centrally located within city limits, south of I-40 on the Butler Avenue and 4th Street corridors. The project limits are generally centered around the Butler Avenue 4th Street intersection. On the west side of the project on 4th Street, the project limits are defined by the I-40 Butler Avenue Interchange. The project continues to the east along that corridor, eventually tying in at the Sennawa Heights subdivision. On 4th Street, the project will tie into existing improvements to the north and recently completed improvements and extend them south down to the Butler Avenue intersection. The project will then continue further south, tying into improvements that are currently under construction related to the Canyon, the Canyon Del Rio Development Project. Let's take a step back and quickly look at the project background here. This project is funded by the City of Flagstaff Transportation Tax. This was part of the original tax that was approved back in the year 2000. It continues to be funded and supported by Proposition 419 or the new transportation tax as we refer to it. That was approved in 2018. Preliminary work on this project kicked off in the early 2000s. In 2005, 2006, an initial effort looked at establishing a preliminary roadway alignment, establishing a complete street cross-section, and really nailed down the proposed footprint for this project. An additional effort in 2007 and 2008 looked mostly at the western end of the Butler Corridor. And one of the highlights that came out of that was the preliminary design for a roundabout at the Harold Ranch Road intersection. Both of these early efforts served to inform city staff as we have coordinated with private development in those ensuing years as development has occurred along this corridor. As many of you are aware, there's been a dramatic increase in development in this specific corridor in the past couple of years. These early works helped inform those conversations, helping us guide the developers through the process of their planning, their entitlement phase, design, and ultimately into construction, while also allowing us to work with them to identify the appropriate cash and lieu contributions, which is where a developer will pay funding to the city to incorporate their improvements across their respective property frontages into our project and also to establish that footprint, as I mentioned earlier, to allow us to identify the needed right-of-way that we need to acquire from those respective properties. Coming out of that early work was the proposed cross-section that you see on the screen before you now. This is a modified detail pretty typical of our arterial complete-street cross-section. We've got two travel lanes in each direction. We've got an on-street bike lane on each side. There's a five-foot parkway and a six-foot sidewalk on the periphery. Our current proposed cross-section, which works within those right-of-way limits as they were previously established, but now incorporates more current priorities specifically related to bikes and pets. While we still have two vehicle lanes in each direction, we've shaved off a little bit of width to those and we've moved the bike lanes from on-street to off-street so that now we have separated bikeways. On each side of the street, we have a dedicated five-foot directional bike lane that's directly adjacent to a six-foot sidewalk. This combined creates an 11-foot multipurpose pathway that will be on either side of the street. This cross-section captures the bulk of the improvements anticipated with this project throughout those project limits. A few other project highlights and considerations. One big one is the Butler Fourth Intersection. Currently, this is being controlled by a temporary signal setup that's been set up as temporary condition for quite some time. We will investigate a roundabout in this particular location and take a look at a separated pedestrian crossing for the footstrail that's in the area and for pedestrians and bicycles in general. There are some significant physical constraints there due to topography and also we've got floodplains and floodways considerations as well. So if in the end, as we make that determination that a roundabout is not the selected alternative design and we are, we fall back on a more traditional signalized intersection, we will endeavor to incorporate enhanced pedestrian bicycle treatments following the ideals of protected intersections. So incorporating pedestrian refuge islands, taking a close look at the pedestrian crossings, minimizing the distances and so on, and adding specific bike lane striping and other treatments to the intersection itself. A further consideration of that intersection specifically will be raising it up to reduce flooding impacts. As many of you are aware, this is the downstream end of the Spruce Avenue Wash. We're all aware of the impacts due to the museum fire and we expect that continued flows above the historical average will continue through this for quite some time. So the intersection will be raised to accommodate for such things. Another highlight point, as I referenced earlier, is the Harold Ranch Road intersection. This will be converted to, this will be realigned and converted to a roundabout. This will also involve realigning some of the driveways that are in that area of the, of the new intersection. The project will incorporate ITS and fiber conduit, connecting and providing for management, traffic control management, connecting essential city facilities and infrastructure and supporting the broadband build-out. I know I mentioned that the intersection would be raised to reduce flooding impacts, but there's additional stormwater infrastructure that doesn't currently exist that will be installed throughout this corridor to capture stormwater flows and direct them to the appropriate outfalls. We've, and one other thing I wanted to touch on are current projects. We've heard the current and ongoing conversations as they relate to enhancing facilities for bikes and pedestrians on similar projects that are currently in design and/or approaching construction. And we will strive to incorporate new strategies, goals, and policies like the Carbon Neutrality Plan and the Draft Active Transportation Master Plan in design of this project. With that in mind, we have significantly increased or enhanced our anticipated project chartering and scoping effort. Upon award of a design contract, which will be our next step for this project, we plan to do what we consider a project refresh. This will take all of this previous work that's been done, the different studies. It will pull everything together, prepare some additional exhibits, go a little bit deeper, provide some additional conceptual designs and alternatives, perform some high-level feasibility analysis, all based on the current project scope. Once we've pulled all of this information together, we plan to go out and engage with our community. We'll engage with the public through town hall meetings. We'll engage with stakeholders, both internal and external. And we will visit with the multiple commissions, which include but are not limited to the Transportation Commission, the Bicycle Advisory Commission, and the Pedestrian Advisory. Once we've worked through that gauntlet, so to speak, we'll summarize all the feedback, the conversations and, and direction that we've and, and direction that we've received at the various levels, and we'll be back before council to continue that discussion at that point. The hope is that we'll be able to reach some level of consensus and direction on what these next steps for the progress project will look like, and that at that point, we will move fully into design. In line with a more typical approach here, we will be coordinating, as I mentioned, with our internal stakeholders, other city divisions. These include Water Services, Arts and Beautification, Sustainability Planning, Streets, Footstrails, Real Estate, and Legal. And of course, we will also be engaging with our valued external stakeholders, ADOT, NAPDA for Transit Considerations, and our other private stakeholders such as Little America and Canyon Del Rio. This is a high-level overview of when this, how this project will proceed and which times this will be back. We hope to advertise this project for Design Engineering Design Services shortly after this conversation, and hope to award the contract and get design started this summer. So we will be back hopefully before the council's summer break to award that design contract by city council. Once we've awarded that, as I just kind of spent a little bit of time talking about, this is where we'll do that project refresh and this outreach effort to public stakeholders, commissions, ultimately culminating with our visit back to city council. We do plan to deliver this project utilizing the Construction Manager Risk Delivery Process, or CMAR, which means that we'll be bringing a contractor onboard to do constructibility reviews, live cost estimating, and other support services related to the design roughly around that 30% design stage. So we'll be back at that point to award that contract, and we'll certainly be back following that as we work through the pricing, construction fees, and so on. At a high level, the project schedule, if we're able to get this thing kicked off this summer, we hope to continue design and wrap that up sometime next year. If we're able to utilize some of the efficiencies of that CMAR project delivery approach, that would allow us to identify possible phasing of the project and get started on some portion of construction before the overall design is 100% complete. Regardless of how that ultimately plays out, we do anticipate that this will be a multiple-season construction project. Our immediate next steps. When we're done here tonight, when we've finished this conversation, gotten feedback, we do plan to advertise our RSOQ. This is our Request for Statement of Qualifications. This will be advertised to qualified engineering design firms. City staff will review the statements received and work through evaluating those firms based on criteria, their, their experience, and their qualifications related to projects with similar scopes and similar priorities, goals, and strategies as we've identified. We'll work through that. We'll identify that firm, and we'll negotiate a scope and fee, and we will be back to city council at that point to award that design contract. Once that starts, that kicks off that outreach effort to our stakeholders, to the public, missions, and so on. At this level, this is going to be high-level preliminary design. We will be certainly talking about a lot of details and important things, but this will be a high-level preliminary. Once we've completed that, and hopefully we've reached consensus at the council level, and we can provide direction, that's when we will move this project into design. As I mentioned, we will be back at 30% design to award the contractor, contract, and so on. So this will be in front of council several more times as we move through this process. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have a public comment back there, Ms. Hultzer?
Yes, Mayor, we do.
All right, let's take that, and then we can fold it back into council.
I have Kate Morley. Kate, you can go ahead and give your comments now. Kate, are you able to unmute? Uh-oh. Okay. Hang on, let me try something here. Go ahead and try again now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, Kate Morley, Deputy General Manager at Mountainline. I want to start off by saying that we are so excited for this project to move forward. We've looked forward to it for many years. As mentioned, there's been a lot of growth and development occurring along this corridor, and we want to be able to better serve it with transit and are waiting for these roadway improvements, including bus stops, to be able to do that. In particular, we wanted to note just a couple of things. One, we're very interested in mid-block crossings associated with bus stops to serve some of those developments. So wanting to make sure that those aren't left out of the corridor planning. And then additionally, we recognize that we have some unique needs at the intersection of Butler and Fourth Street. We run a deviation there. It's atypical for normal bus service and might need some creative solutions to make that deviation work, where sometimes a bus is going straight through a signal and sometimes it's moving left. And so ultimately, we're just very excited for this project to kick off and look forward to being incorporated into the planning project as well, ensuring that the transit needs are met through the design, and appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that our only speaker?
I do have one more, Mayor, just one moment.
Thank you.
Anne, you can go ahead and unmute and offer your comments now.
Okay. It says I am unmuted.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. I am Anne Witke. I live in Foxgallan. And I am looking forward to having some sidewalks and safe development along Butler, because right now I, I don't drive. And if I want to ride my bike, I'm limited to going up Fourth Street, across the bridge and stuff. And it's nice to have that separate bike path, because I ride a three-wheel bike that doesn't go over 10 miles an hour. I use the pedestrian walkway. And I also, I had a sister who used a motorized wheelchair for the last few years of her life. And I just want to make sure that you realize that people riding bikes or motorized vehicles are not always going to ride in the bike lane if you have the bike lane in the street. So I like the design that has the bikeway combined with the sidewalk and make it wider, because right now sidewalks are really not wide enough to accommodate my three-wheel bike, especially if people have anything growing out into the sidewalk. And I'm also very concerned about roundabouts, because Butler is going to be two lanes each way, I believe. And I grew up in New Jersey, and I am unfortunately familiar with roundabouts on very major roads. And they were two lanes each way. And I think the state of New Jersey actually got rid of them, because I do not think they are safe. I mean, I nearly had a heart attack and one, and I've heard of new drivers being stuck in the inside circle going round and round and round, because they can't figure out how to get out. I wonder if the city has talked to Sedona to find out how their two-lane each-way traffic circles work out. Because as the traffic, as Fourth Street corridor gets more developed, there's going to be a lot more traffic. And really, roundabouts only work if it's one lane each way and not that much traffic. Because once you get it so that people, it's a constant line of cars, no one is ever going to get in from the side. And I'm also concerned about trying to cross a roundabout, either as a pedestrian or on my electric bike. We've already had enough traffic accidents and stuff in the area. Also, because there is a senior home that's going up along Butler.
Thank you, Mrs. Witke. I apologize you have hit the three minutes, but happy to view what we were saying about the senior facility. Quick to wrap up.
Oh, well, I'm, I'm thinking that they might want to get out and walk around too, or get about. They might be in electronic wheelchairs. And I just hope that you consider handicapped access in this design.
Thank you, Mrs. Witke. Appreciate your commentary. All right, with that, that is our last speaker. So I will turn it over to Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jeremy, so much, and to the team. I'm really excited with some of the developments I'm seeing here. I know we're in a very preliminary mode. I wanted to give you a chance to potentially elaborate, if, if, if that's viable, on, you know, we've had some conversations, some high-profile conversations recently about other intersections in town. And I, I feel like there's been some responsiveness to that in this preliminary design. I'm wondering if you wanted to comment on how those conversations have impacted what you're bringing to us right now, and how those conversations might all continue to swirl together in, in, just a new approach to how we're looking at intersections in town, based off of the wonderful dialogue, the long overdue and necessary dialogue that we're starting to have about innovations with intersections. What's, what's new? How is what you brought to us today different than what it might have looked like if you had brought it to us a year ago, without those other conversations having happened?
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Those are good questions. There's a lot going on in this space at the moment. Certainly, you're involved in many of those conversations that have been ongoing. We've got multiple efforts on multiple ends related to the Metro Plan Mini Grant, sustainability. We'll be looking at, you know, different metrics, different ways to envision modeling, and so on. I think, and I'll speak personally as an engineer here, I think we're always trying to do the best that we can with the constraints that we have to live in, right? I mean, that's, that's, that's a real constraint that we have to work with. Certainly, we're hearing the conversations that are going on, the talk, the Climate Neutrality Plan, which is pushing for the big shift, and a lot of this stuff is directly in line with those. At this point, we're too early, and we haven't done any of that design, to, to make any comments about what this may ultimately look like when we actually start to sit down and see what space we have and what the art of the possible is. But certainly, this is driven by a lot of the conversations that have been ongoing, related to intersections, roundabouts, pedestrians, and bicycles.
Thank you. Other members of council? McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. If I remember correctly, the roundabout that'll be just east of Little America will be designed such that trucks won't have to make a left-hand turn out of Little America. They'll make a right-hand turn, go east on Butler, and then make a U-turn, and then come back to go west. And that sounds like it's a pretty big roundabout for semi-trucks to maneuver that. Do you have any comments on that first? That's my first question.
I wasn't involved in the design of that, but yes, that is my understanding as well, that it will be, we are going to consider some access restrictions along that stretch of road, which would entail trucks needing to go down and use the roundabout to make the U-turn. Ultimately, that would be a lot safer. If you've driven through that area, when trucks are trying to pull out and across Butler, it can, it can be an interesting situation, to say the least.
Interesting situation, yes. Just to talk about Kate Morley's comments, you know, I agree with her that we need to be transit-friendly. I mean, that's part of the vision of where the city's going nowadays. The other question I had is about at Fourth Street in Butler to have a roundabout. I mean, why is it that we want a roundabout as opposed to a traditional intersection? I mean, she brought up, the speaker brought up some interesting questions about it's difficult for pedestrians to get across, bicycles to get across. They're confusing to people. You know, I'm open-minded about roundabouts, but it does seem that they're a little bit problematic, especially when they get to be into, you know, four-lane streets to each way and in high-traffic volume. So I guess we're going to have a trade-off study on all those questions. Is that true in the future?
Correct. Yes. At this point, we don't know that we have the space, whether or not it makes sense in that particular location, but we want to at least investigate it to be able to see whether or not it would have worked and would have been a viable option. As for pedestrian crossings, there are certainly challenges when you have to cross multiple lanes, but they're generally, we try to limit that crossing length and make them only have to look for traffic one direction, limit those lengths, and so on.
Well, and the other issue is that the cars never stop. Where in a traditional intersection, the traffic will stop, and then pedestrians can go across. So I'm sure this is not a real straightforward question. You could do your master's thesis on this one easily. Anyway, I guess I'm not convinced one way or the other. And I've been keeping my eyes open on this issue. So I look forward to a discussion, an honest discussion of the pros and cons of each alternative. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Shimonie, and then we'll go to Councilmember Sweet. He may say something about bicycles.
I actually like the, the bike infrastructure here, and I've been in conversations about these plans for three years now, to Councilmember Aslan's comment. You know, this is, this is a conversation that, you know, Rick, and myself, and Martin, and others have been having for a long time. And I'm so grateful that, you know, council's really embraced these ideas. And, and Jeremy, thank you for your presentation and your work on this. I so appreciate it. I have a few questions that maybe you can help speak to. Are you able to speak to the underlying values and decision-making criteria on, on this project?
I'm sorry, as it relates, I'm not sure I understand the question.
The underlying values or, or priorities of, of the, you know, the drafts that we've produced so far?
Are we speaking specifically carbon neutrality, draft active transportation master plan, or are you speaking project specifically?
Yeah, project specific to this one. There's two designs that were in the, in the packet and in the presentation. One that was maybe 20 years old, and then one that was done more recently. Do you know what the underlying values and priorities are in that, in that decision-making?
So I'll probably need some help to answer this question, to fill in some of the blanks as far as what's been, what's been thought of in the past. I mean, certainly, we've had a complete-streets approach for, for many years, in the sense that we are trying to not, it hasn't necessarily prioritized bikes and pedestrians, but certainly has provided facilities for bikes and pedestrians, along with vehicles. I think this particular project, this is, this is, we're in this gray space, so to speak, where there's a lot of stuff that's changing. These revision, you know, the climate, climate neutrality plan, and some are working through the Metro Plan Sustainability efforts there are going to go a long ways towards informing this discussion about what our underlying values are going to be for projects moving forward. This project in particular kind of finds itself in between, right? We haven't fully had that conversation. We haven't fully fleshed out what all of those things look like. And I think what you're seeing here is really with that in mind, that we're trying to accommodate and be reactive in understanding of what the current environment is and the current push towards this big shift. And that's going to take time, but also be able to advance this project, because we do need to, you know, development is cruising along, and we're just falling farther behind. We need to move this project forward.
Absolutely. And Jeremy, you know, on that note, you know, I just want to give you and our, and our team really a big shout-out. And as we go through this transition, I know it's awkward. I know it's difficult. I know it's challenging and at times, you know, maybe stressful. But I, I just think we're, we're really doing the best we can in this transition period. And, and I'm just so excited for the city and for our residents. And, and you kind of spoke to my next question, which is how can we align this effort to the regional plan policies, the ATMP, and the Climate Neutrality Plan, which I heard you speak to two of those. But, you know, a lot of, a lot of values and ideas that are outlined in this... in the CNP, in the AT&amp;P, in the regional plan. Yeah, how do you plan to embrace those?
I think we're very early in this project, right? We don't have enough of a design to really speak to a lot of those. What we can offer at this point is that they will be part of that conversation, right? So these will be considerations. We'll be working with sustainability, the other internal departments, and so on, looking at these policies and guidelines. And at that point is where many of these maybe tough decisions will come up, but at this point, we don't have enough, other than, you know, we've shown you the basics of some of the, what we intend to be our new cross-section, working within the confines, constraints of what we have from a footprint standpoint, without having to go change everything.
Thank you for that, Jeremy. And then, in regards to the project refresh that you spoke to, I think that's wonderful. And I'm wondering, you know, kind of continuing off this line of thought in regards to AT&amp;P, CNP, and regional plan, if we can explore all potential options of what widening could look like for Butler. Can we explore two, like the minimum, which is, you know, two vehicle lanes plus widening in the sense of bike and ped needs solely, plus, and then, you know, that as option A, option B being three lanes with bike and ped, and obviously transit all being prioritized here, and then option, you know, three, option C, being, you know, four lanes with bike and ped and transit needs. Is that possible to bring, you know, when you go through the commissions and back to council and the public, can we bring multiple options that really kind of provide options?
I believe that is our intent, is to explore some of those options. I mean, there's a lot there, right? I mean, we have to continue our conversations with NHTA about what transit needs to look like along this corridor. Butler's not currently in their permanent transit network, although 4th Street is, so I'm sure we'll be having conversations about that. So there's much to come, but I imagine that these next steps will look a lot like what you just described.
That's great. You know, and I'll just plug that there's communities around the nation right now really working towards right sizing, including ADOT. ADOT has a whole page on their website to right sizing, and right sizing is just, it just seems to be the way of the future, and it makes a lot of sense, and I'm wondering how we can right-size this project. So I'm glad to hear, Jeremy, that we're going to be exploring, you know, possibly two lanes, three lanes, and four lanes. And then, lastly, I think this is the end of my comments, I just wanted to acknowledge the public commenter, Ann. Ann, thank you for calling in and joining us this evening, or this afternoon. We really need to hear from people like you and others in the community, so you really help us make the best decisions that we can. And you also represent a voice that typically gets, you know, not prioritized. So I'm glad that you were able to call in, and I agree with you, and that's my next comment, is in regards to the roundabout. Jeremy, I know we're very early in this whole process, and I'm sure with exploration of this, we'll learn, but I am concerned with these larger roundabouts in our community, as Ann spoke to, and my understanding is, if they're one-lane, they make sense and they're safe, right, Councilmember McCarthy? But if they're larger, they're complicated, they're dangerous, not technically dangerous, but they're a lot less comfortable, and they do result in more crashes. But I think my last comment, Jeremy, or second-to-last comment, it's just I'd like to see transit prioritized above levels of service here, along with the needs of our most vulnerable, our walkers and our cyclists, and really, you know, really identifying our priorities, which I know is an ongoing conversation, but really flipping the chart to put the pedestrian first, cyclist second, public transit third, you know, ride share, you know, fourth, and then private, personal vehicles fifth. And I'll just say in closing, I'm just so grateful that you and our staff is bringing this to council so early on, and City Manager, that's kudos to the whole team. I really appreciate the engagement this early on, and I'm really looking forward to the process, and I'm really hopeful that we're going to have a range of options, not just a predetermined option that we bring before the public and council, but a range of options that really pushes our comfort level. Thank you, Mayor, council, and Jeremy, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Dan Folk, did you want to maybe address the questions about alignment with the regional plan?
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Dan Folk, Community Development Director. I did send an email out, it was probably 40 minutes before today's meeting. Councilmember Shimoney had inquired about, you know, how the regional plan is used to interact with capital design of transportation projects. It also kind of came up for your upcoming retreat this Thursday, and so I provided that background information. There's a lot in there. But we do have a chapter in the regional plan on transportation. It's Chapter 10. I provided the link in my email. I believe there were nine goals, and a lot of the goals focus on the different modes, right? So there's a section on bicycles, there's a section on pedestrians, there's a section on automobiles, transit. We even have sections on railroads and airplanes, because we have an airport. But in terms of the relationship to this discussion tonight, you know, those policies, it's to promote all those modes, right? Efficient ways to get around town. There's definitely policies on mode shift, you know, trying to get folks out of the single occupant vehicle, using bikes and pedestrians as, you know, as a way to relieve congestion as well as meeting other goals. You know, there's also goals that support the automobile, right, and the efficient use of our roads for cars and getting folks through intersections and around the system. And so I do think there's a broad range of policies that address all these different modes. Something that's really interesting, and we've had a lot of discussions on the staff level, are the tables included about priority modes, right? What is the priority of different modes? And it even has come up here in the last few minutes. And this is a really interesting conversation to have. It's not in the goals and policies, but it's in these tables that are in the chapter. And so it looks at automobiles, pedestrians, bicycles, transit, and then it includes parking as well. And what it looks at is the different area types. So our regional plan includes urban, suburban, rural, and employment area types. We also have these place types. And then it looks at the classification of the street, right? So arterial, collector, and local. And it does provide some guidance. And then it looks at locations, so general locations and then activity centers. Activity centers are the places in our regional plan where we want to see higher density, you know, mix of uses, the idea of capturing trips, places where people could live and work. We want to see a high level of pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure in activity centers. And so what this table does is it prioritizes those different modes by those locations and those area types. So it does provide some guidance, I think, to council when you're doing designs. You know, this particular segment, Butler, is a minor arterial, so you could look at those tables and try to get some guidance on priority of those different modes. But in general, I would just say the plan supports all these modes. It does support a shift, I think, away from vehicles to bike and pedestrian, but also recognizing that, you know, vehicles are an important part of our transportation system, and we need to accommodate the efficient use of people, you know, using their car to go to work, to take the kids to school, run errands and all that. So again, I think it does a good job of addressing all the modes, but also encouraging the shift that we're talking about. I anticipate in the update of the regional plan, it was adopted in 2014, that we're going to see a significant revision to this chapter. I think just in the eight years since we've adopted it and it was ratified by the voters, we've seen a change in the conversation. And so there's a lot there, but very happy to be part of the discussion.
And Mayor, if I can jump back in really quick?
Sure.
Dan, thank you for being with us and speaking to that. Yeah, when I reviewed the regional plan recently with our Mountain Line Board meeting, I was pretty shocked by the policies and how transformative and progressive they were in making the argument for right sizing of roads and the needs of our most vulnerable. I was really impressed, actually. And I just wanted to say that, Mayor, and Dan, and Mayor, if it's appropriate, I'll let you make this decision. I'd love to have maybe Martin, if he's on the line, speak to what we're talking about tonight through the lens of the AT&amp;P, and Jenny Neiman, if she's on the line, to talk about the CNP. But I'll let you decide if that's appropriate. But those are voices that I'd like to start including in these discussions more, and I think it'd be helpful for council to hear from these other voices. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. And I'm aware that they are involved in these conversations, and this is super early in the realm, so I think it would be good to have their voices at our next meeting regarding this, and make sure that, you know, we have good presentation and their good input at the later point. But Councilmember Sweet did have a comment or question?
Thank you. I lived off Harold Ranch Road in the early 90s, and I'd never dreamt this conversation would be happening. It's incredible. I'm wondering if you can touch on how we're ensuring that transit is in the conversation now. Mountain Line sometimes is talked about more towards the end, and I think it would be advantageous to make sure they're brought in at the earlier stage. Can you talk about that?
Sure. So we were in contact with Mountain Line this morning, actually, previous to, prior to this council meeting, so we have been in contact there. I'm not in the transportation group, but I understand that our transportation engineer and that group have regular interactions with Mountain Line. They have, they're aware of this, they've had conversations related to what Mountain Line envisions their needs being for this project. And since we really haven't kicked the project off, they haven't really progressed beyond that stage, but they will be at that table and have a voice in the process.
Thank you. And I do want to just give a quick thanks to the team. This preliminary design is already just steps above where we were a year ago, and I appreciate all of the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Well, I'll just make a quick echo of what other comments have already been made, that, yeah, making sure that we're accommodating Mountain Line through the process, the mid-block crossings, et cetera, that they may need, and as well as getting their input on the roundabout and how the buses can navigate the particular intersection. But aside from that, appreciate you all putting this together, coming to us early, and looking forward to how this develops. Any other comments, council? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, well, with that, we are going to take a bit of a break to make sure that we're starting our flood mitigation update at 5:30 to better accommodate individuals who have an 8 to 5 job, as we've been doing before. So, thank you, and we'll see you back here in a little while. All right, so it is 5:30. Could you, a small bar check if we have our other members of council available electronically?
Certainly. Councilmember Shimoney, are you online? Councilmember Shimoney?
Yes, I, hi, everybody, I am.
Terrific.
Okay, that's fine, we can get started here. All righty, we are down to agenda item number nine. This is our flood project update.
Good afternoon, evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. I've been using the term arm wrestling a lot this week, and it's probably not an appropriate term, because Sam always wins. But we were talking about who's going to kick off the presentation tonight, and I said, well, I'd love to, I'd like to get things started. And so I think the last, we've agreed to do this on a monthly basis, and we try to come to you with updates as we move along in the process, and what's been happening in the past month. I'm Andy Bertelson, the Water Services Director for the City of Flagstaff, by the way. So tonight, you're going to hear about the feasibility study, and Julie Lead is a engineer, a local engineer in our community, that's been working with us on the feasibility study. She's going to talk a bit about that. The Cedar to Dorthea and Dorthea inlet project, many of the, many of you that are familiar with the flood area know that area very well, and it's one of the epicenters of the flood area, if you will, that Dorthea and Maine area, there are currently barriers across that roadway of Maine. And so we've had a lot of discussions about the future of those barriers and this project's impact on that total system. Our Capitol Group, Rick Barrett, is here, our city engineer, Christine Cameron, such a great project manager, and she's really navigated this project very well. There were a lot of complications with it, as you know, with property rights, et cetera, and with the urging and drive of our city manager. We've, Bryce Doty, our real estate manager, we've managed through a lot of those concerns with that project. Just like any project, there are so many hurdles. We identify the hurdles. It's easy to sit and look at the hurdles and say, I can't jump them. We tried to jump all of them. The Killip School Regional Detention Basins, Scott Overton will talk about that. A good partnership effort with the Flagstaff Unified School District. They built a new school on that site, and in the, essentially, the place of the old school and some surrounding areas, we've made some drainage improvements. It's been a good joint project, jointly funded project. Scott Overton went to the Flagstaff Unified School District Board meeting and talked about the importance and the overall flood mitigation effort. They agreed with that level of importance, and as well as the protection of the school, and so we're hopeful it can be helpful for the larger project, as well as protecting the school. That school did get water in it last year, the old school. And then the inlet at Ponderosa Park, Ed Schenk, our stormwater manager, I believe, is going to talk about this one, as well as the park barriers, siren system. Sam Beckett is going to talk about this. Fortunately, Sam is with us, he has a lot of experience in emergency management, and so was able to navigate that process with Coconino County, Wes Dyson, and our emergency management team there. The sandbag refresh effort, we'll talk about that a bit as well. I think that's Sam, it might be Sam and Scott. Parkway Sediment Basins, Lucinda Andriani from the Coconino County Flood Control District is online, so she'll talk about that a bit, and then Sarah Langley on communication. So thanks for letting me address you to start this off this evening. We know you'll have questions as we go along, and so we're just looking forward to a healthy discussion as we continue to make progress. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Good to see you. Few updates on the feasibility study. The final feasibility study is complete. The difference, the major difference between the draft feasibility study and the final feasibility study is the difference between open channel for a few sections of the spruce wash and going to a concrete box culvert the entire length of spruce wash. So an open-channel box, this was the shift between the draft and the final, presents some safety concerns. It really encroaches in people's backyards, its aesthetics, you can imagine a big concrete box, you'd have to put railing on it to prevent people from being able to access that box. So that was really the big change between the draft and the final. So the final is in city's hands, and Sarah and I have been working together to put together a, kind of a Cliff Notes version, or a memo that will be going out to the public very soon, and that will also include a link to the entire feasibility study for those that want to do a deep dive into that. And Sarah can speak a little bit more about that. Our next step, which is in draft form as well, is 15% design plans. These look a little bit more like engineering documents, full-size plan sheets that have notes on them and that show the entire profile and the alignment. And the importance of doing that is we needed to identify where we had utility conflicts and be able to start quantifying some of the work. That sets us up for the third bullet on this list, and that is the opinion of probable construction cost. We have prepared that opinion of probable construction costs, and that is in peer review right now. So we've gone to an outside party, we're working with a couple of contractors. Pricing is so volatile right now, we are seeing some very surprising things in the market, and so what we present to you and to the entire city and to the public, we want to make sure that that's been vetted through some different eyes as well. So that is the update on the feasibility study. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, council? Check online here.
All right.
I think we're good. Thank you.
And I think Mr. Overton is next.
I think, let's see the next slide.
Am I staying up here?
This is probably Christine Cameron. Thank you, Christine.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Christine Cameron, project manager with Capitol Improvements. So for the scope of this project, this portion of spruce wash, this is an open shotcrete channel from Cedar down to Dorthea in the Sunnyside neighborhood, and an inlet and 12-by-8 concrete box culvert across Dorthea Avenue. These improvements will stabilize the channel and increase the capacity of the crossing These improvements will stabilize the channel and increase the capacity of the crossing for the spruce wash. Our construction estimate is 2.6 million, and we have been doing some work on trying to bring that cost down with ongoing design modifications of the box, that structure, and changes on how we're realigning the city utilities crossing that box. We started construction last week on the 21st, and we are working with the franchise utility locations, you know, getting them out of the way first. We've had some additional conflicts with Lumen and APS that we're trying to expedite. This could potentially be an impact to the overall schedule, but we hope to have, you know, some good news when we return to you in April that, that we're maintaining that schedule. And both agencies have been really responsive. Our focus is to get the conveyance of the channel and the box complete by monsoons. And then into July, we'll finish pulling the street back together and, and do the surface improvements. The city manager is executing the contract with Tiffany Construction under an emergency procurement, and that contract will be brought to council on April 19th. And this was another measure to expedite the work prior to monsoons. So I'll take any questions or hand it back to the team.
Thank you. Any questions, council? I think we're good. Thank you much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Christine. And that really is good news that we're moving product on that site and that you see forward progress at Dorthea. Those barriers have been, since been moved off the street, and Tiffany is a, one of our first-class contractors, and I expect nothing but good results from your team and the efforts to get that one delivered. So good work and a great update on that project front. Moving a little further down south, the Killip School Regional Detention Basins. This work is advancing nicely. We've had a lot of good things fall in our favor for this project. We've had great weather. Even the minor disruptions in weather have not impacted the project schedule. We've had really clear direction from our engineering team and what we need to build, and we've had some discussions as the design goes on and as the construction progresses on how to accommodate opportunities when we come across them. We're able to work through Adam Yali in Public Works, and he's able to communicate with the contractor on site to really not only focus on our end goal, which is detaining as much water as possible, but really finding great value to the taxpayer and to the long-term benefit of a field amenity for FUSD once the school is delivered in August. And that project is on schedule to still be delivered prior to the opening of school and prior to our monsoon season of '22. There are a couple minor pieces. There is a weir, W-E-I-R, and it really is a fancy word for like a big speed bump in the middle of the two playfields. Between the multipurpose field and the softball field will be a large weir structure, and that weir structure allows water to convey from field to field without a velocity that damages the field surfaces and the actual basins. That is in its final design and its final element, so we're hopeful that gets done in the next couple days and weeks. The outlets in the final grades are now generally in final design. We know what the final elevation is going to be. The contractor is now shooting for those final grades, and we feel really good about that. We are now kind of moving into that proportionate cost share discussion, if you recall back to the IGA. This was really a strict formula-based arrangement, but you know, now we're down to the nitty-gritty of the last parts and pieces and the final design effort, and we will continue our discussions with FUSD, and if anything comes up, we'll be sure to let you know. But work progressing nicely at Killip School. Thanks again to Adam as well for his attention daily on that site from Public Works. Couple progress photos. You'll see the black pipe on the left side of most people's slides in the room, I believe. That is the outlet side of the two detention basins that will serve as a conveyance into the existing system on Third Street, and it is all in the underground infrastructure, installation complete phase. The middle picture kind of shows where that pipe used to be, but it's all backfilled now, so it's all underground. The blankets, the orange and black blankets at the bottom of the screen are covering up curb that was re-poured for the future Third Street corner. And then the upper right picture is just a picture of the largest of the two detention basins with the small excavator sitting in the middle. But it does provide nice backdrop of kind of the scale, size, and scope. And remember, we're now targeting between eight and 10 million acre feet of water. That's been our goal from day one. So a fairly large, sizable detention basin right in the middle of the neighborhood, which we are very excited about. Questions on Killip School before I turn it over to the inlet portion of this project?
All right, thank you.
Not seeing any. Thank you much.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council. Ed Schenk, Stormwater Manager. So Killip Inlet, this will be a new project to deliver water from Royo Seco to the Killip Regional Detention Facilities. We're working on design right now with SWI with our, as our design engineer. Funding is being provided, or at least partially provided, by the Environmental Infrastructure Grant. That's 1.5 million. This will probably be built later this year or in the next year, so the detention basins will be completed first. The purpose of this is to have a controlled conveyance, a controlled way of getting water from a Royo Seco to those detention basins instead of what we had last summer, which was just overflow through Ponderosa Park. Next slide. We did purchase, Stormwater and Water Services did purchase 210 linear feet of concrete barrier from United Rental. This is a concrete barrier that's been used at the Killip School site. It's no longer needed there, so we were able to take advantage of that. We got it for about half-cost used barrier, which is pretty good since, as you know, everything these days is pretty hard to get your hands on. So we have that barrier for our interim condition at Ponderosa Park. So this is the, what we're going to have before we have the inlet structure. So we're going to put this in place in the next month or two. And you have a diagram of that. So this is Ponderosa Park on the top part. You can kind of see the design for the detention basins on the, on the lower section. Where this red line is, that's where there's existing barrier for part of the Killip School construction. We're moving that barrier and putting it where the blue line is. So we're essentially developing a, a series of, of short walls that allows the water that comes off of Royo Seco and goes through Ponderosa Park to be funneled into that detention basin. So this is an interim condition. Hope to only have it in place for just this monsoon season, and then hopefully next year we'll have that inlet project completed. So we'll have a controlled conveyance from a Royo Seco into the detention facilities. With that, if you have any questions, otherwise I'm going to turn it back over to Sam.
Thank you. We're good to proceed.
All right. Thank you, Ed. Sorry Julie was up here before me, so. Good evening, Mayor and council. Appreciate you having us here. Sam Beckett, Streets Director. Talked to you on a couple items here today. One of them being the siren system. As you know, we've had a lot of good progress, like all the other projects. I'm just trying to keep up with everybody else, so making sure that we move forward, keep these sirens moving forward. We received notification yesterday that the final siren arrays have been shipped, so we're excited to see those come in. The vendor, which is Alertis, is working through the procurement side to make sure we have a contractor lined up. They're taking care of all that on their side, and then just getting these poles established. APS has partnered with us to make sure that we'll have power for all of them, and yeah, really good progress on this. One step at a time, I think we're at in this project, but overall, good movement and so far on point with our goals, yeah. Go ahead. Yes, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I had a meeting that Ed was a guest at on Friday. We had some good conversations. This was with the Coconino Plateau Water Advisory Partnership. He went over some of this. I, I found the conversation interesting, so I'm going to ask some of my questions again, just, just to get them out there. The picture you have there makes it look bidirectional, but these, these sirens are going to go out more than just two directions, right? They're going to be 360 degrees?
No, you're, you're exactly right, Councilman. They, they're going to have, yeah, the north and south direction is what we're focused on, based on the alignment within the channel, but they base it off of wattage. So each one of them is 2,400 watts, which equals so many siren arrays. And they can adjust how much, how many watt, how much wattage you want to the north and how much to the south. So based on the location of not only the siren array, but the next siren array, we can adjust what's going to fit and maximize that output to make sure we're, we've got the best coverage across the board, but yeah, good catch.
And I see there's some locations identified. Do you have any point spots, specific locations on a map where we could see that array?
So what we've been waiting for and what the vendor's been doing is they have been remapping that sound output based on the new GPS pinpoints that we established in, within city right-of-way. Rick's team has done a phenomenal job at really supporting this and with his project managers and, and getting this moving along. So we are ultimately right now waiting on that new diagram to come out from the vendor, and then that'll be one of the pieces I'd like to update council here on.
Great, send that to us as soon as you have it. I'm very curious about that. And then finally, those speakers aren't going to precisely look the way they do in that picture, correct?
They're going to look pretty much exactly the way they do in that picture. Yeah, sorry. That's just, yeah.
I think it's a cool design. It's, it's kind of medieval. It's, looks like the sort of thing you impale your enemies on. But obviously, the important thing is their functionality. Someone else in our group mentioned that they thought this was public art. So, I guess, I mean, do you have any thoughts on that? Are these mostly going to be hidden behind trees or tucked away and?
No, I refrain from making any comments on art because people who know stuff about art cringe, so I stay away from that. However, I think if they're there, ultimately, I hope that the goal is that people look at them as a sign of safety, and really, that's what we're looking for at the end of the day. They can look at these and feel at ease, knowing that whether it's their kids or whether they are out and they forgot their cellphone or whatever it might be, that there's coverage out there and that someone's, someone's out there watching over. So, and that's, that's the goal with this, and that's what we're shooting for.
Thanks for those updates.
Yeah, of course. If there's anything else on that or nothing else on that, I'll move on to the next item.
I think we're good to proceed.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. All right. The 2022 Sandbag Refresh Project. I know many of you have actually been involved in these in the past couple years, so it is a massive undertaking, undertaking, and logistics are even bigger to make sure that we coordinate properly and that we're maximizing our resources as we do this. There's nothing worse than only having one or two projects a day, having all these resources, not having them lined up. So you'll start to see that we'll have a whole communications campaign go out, and I'll let Sarah speak to that. And that's going to get out ahead of time, get the word out there that we're working on this. As we establish the call center, we'll get the, I guess we'll call them work orders as they come through to be able to get out there and address some of these needs. And right now, what we're working through with the Flood Control District is a lot of the roles and responsibilities for this year in establishing how we're going to move forward as a team and accomplish our refresh before we get into monsoon season. As you can see right here, some of the projects coming up, joint sandbag refresh, have sandbags readily available, like always every year. Flood Control District still has 75,000 pre-filled sandbags on hand that will get established out within the footprint of the neighborhood before monsoon season and then picked up before we start to see rain, so we don't have additional debris out there. Really, the goal behind these refreshes was to support our access and functional needs residents. We can only support as much as we can get to, but really, the goal is to take care of those who can't take care of themselves. And that is the most important piece for us. That is our top priority, and that is the goal going into this, is to ensure that we, we take care of those residents and we get them in tip-top shape before we see any kind of monsoon or rain. And then establishing volunteer day events. Again, I think that's where it comes back to, I know we saw great presence from council last year. Really appreciated, appreciated that over the last couple of years. Phenomenal there. So we're working through that piece of it. We'll be working with United Way, Flood Control District to establish some dates, figure out what those look like, scope it out, and complete some really good work with our community. Do we have any questions on this one to follow up on?
Yeah, please, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Not really a question, just an urging to, to publicize the dates of all of this just as soon as you get them, and to, to keep in mind that for some residents, it's going to take a lot of planning on their part to be able to utilize the, all the products that are brought out to the neighborhoods.
For sure. I think it's like you've been sitting in our meetings. That is definitely our goal, so our top priority is to get these roles and responsibilities established, locked in, and then really get this, this whole public information and community messaging out there and get that established so people can pre-plan with this. I think we've done a really good job in previous years. We're going to use that as a template moving forward and hopefully have a really good season this year, well, as good as it can be for what you're planning for.
Thank you. I had a couple questions as well. So when the monsoons hit last year, when people called in, you know, we prioritize the disabled, the elderly. Did we log who, those locations so that way we can go back to them, or are we going to go, have to start anew with who are the individuals that, you know, particularly needed the priority?
Yeah, when, when residents call into the call center, all that gets logged into a system through the Flood Control District, and I see Lucinda jumping on right now. All that is information that is confidential information that is stored in, within a system and utilized solely for the purpose of the refresh project. I'll let Lucinda speak in detail if she'd like to on what that, what that really means, but ultimately, the goal is to, to be able to follow up on those if we have to. But realistically, it's a lot of confidential information, and we make sure that we, we try and keep it that way, and it's not something that we publicly give out to our crews to go out and kind of beat the street on. But we also do evaluations before, and so we will have people, like we've done every year, contracted engineers, staff who have a very good understanding of what we're dealing with out there, will go out and do a true evaluation of what the flood mitigations look like, and they'll start honing in on properties that go, well, this one right here looks like it could use some work. And if they don't fall within that access or functional needs, we give them packets of information to let them know what they can do to bring their stuff back up to par. So there's a whole lot of pieces to this, from the first initial walkthrough and evaluation of the current mitigations to the final one of going through and making sure that we were successful in getting all of the requests for service completed. But it, it's a bigger undertaking than I think most of us realize, just to get us ready to be in the monsoon season, but there's, there's a lot of moving pieces to this, yeah.
Thank you. And the other question is, when are the volunteer days expected to start? Because it would be really good if we were doing that before finals week at NAU and trying to, you know, rally up a lot of the folks, the able-bodied folks that we have there willing to help and, yeah. So I'm just kind of wondering, what, what's the timeline for the expected volunteer days?
You know, I'd like to hope that we can have most of these kickoff within probably late April into June. I don't know when that's going to be for, for NAU there, so I don't know. Do you have the dates on when that would be for finals with NAU?
I think it is mid-May.
Sorry, I didn't mean to flip the script and ask you.
No, no worries. No, I can, I can check it out. It's a, that's important.
It was a test. You're doing great. You're doing great.
I don't, I don't work there no more, so.
But overall, we're trying to get it done as soon as possible. Our goal is to have these done before monsoon season, which would be for us, what we're planning for is July 1. So ultimately, if we could have some of these kicking off by late April, maybe May, that's our goal, and we'll see where those hopefully lie. But as soon as we start getting some dates and all that comes together, you'll see Sarah craft a much cleaner message than you'll get from me and get all that information out there.
Excellent. Looks like the final exam schedule is actually the first week of May.
First week of May, okay. Well, we'll definitely note that in our planning process. I think we have a meeting next week, and we'll follow up on that, but yeah, it's a great, great point. I appreciate that.
If we could, yeah, if we could have a volunteer day specifically, even just NAU, and have the athletics, because they were a huge help last time, and we can coordinate with community relations there and President Cruz Rivera to really get the word out and hit the ground, so.
No, that's a great point. I think our community has been tremendous over these last couple of years of stepping up and really getting out there and helping, helping other community members, so great, great point. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? I'm not seeing any, so thank you much.
All right. I will hand it over to Lucinda.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Great to be with you again this evening. Going to cover kind of three, I'll say four topics tonight. It says Parkway Basins. I'm going to frankly come back to this because I want to first stop. I think it's, it's very important that we all, all remember and understand that, you know, we're dealing with an entire watershed here, and so as you're you know, we're dealing with an entire watershed here. And so as you're well aware, the the district is focusing on the areas above the city. And so I'm gonna start more toward and start with with updating you on the projects that are underway that that the district is managing. First with On Forest. As you're well aware, we have an agreement with the Forest Service and that process is going extremely well. It's been really working well together. And they have in fact been able to move up the schedule for the NEPA process, the National Environmental Protection Act process by two weeks. And so we're now looking at the likelihood that we will have a final decision the first week of May, which is fantastic. The more time that we have to be able to be on the ground constructing, the better. And so because that is a significant component of the sediment reduction measures that that we are pursuing there is On Forest. And we need frankly every second we can to be on Forest before the monsoon season. So so that's going extremely well. I'll I'll kind of come back and touch on that in terms of what are the various processes that could influence that going forward, but it's going well. Those plans are are nearing 90% and I think, you know, we'll we'll again, we'll move forward. The goal again is to start in very early, hopefully that first week of May. Then then with the water flowing to the south, it comes into the 40 acres parcel privately owned. And we've been in pretty much continuous communication with that party and those communications have gone very well. We're very fortunate that the owner of that property is very sensitive to the impacts to not only her property, but but the city. She's very concerned about the downstream impacts that have been taking place. And so they have to date have been very cooperative. We are in kind of the final stage of of providing them with the documents to be able to move forward with a very important alluvial fan restoration project on that property as well as a number of erosion control measures, grade control measures on two different, both tributaries, both the west and the eastern tributary that flow through that property that are very critical to reducing sediment throughout throughout downstream, the watershed downstream. Then moving into Mount Eldon Estates, we're in a process where at 90% plans, conducting that final review of the 90% plans as we speak. The goal is to have secured all of the cooperator agreements by no later than Monday. And with the goal that we will be into construction the following week. And so right now, it's it's I guess I describe it as it's my push-push time. I'm pushing everybody to to quickly move through their processes and and that includes, you know, various pieces of permitting that I'll come back and touch on in a minute here as well as working with the contractor to secure pricing and and getting the those contracts approved by the Board of the Flood Control District, et cetera. So a lot of moving parts. Overall, going very well, getting a lot of cooperation overall. So I think people are recognizing and we all need to recognizing recognize that this is very likely our last access to any funds, you know, outside of the city, access to any federal funding. As I keep telling people, this is kind of the last hurrah. So if you want some support with with erosion, reducing erosion on your property and those kinds of issues that you may well have been experiencing, this is it. So otherwise, it's going very well. That includes Mount Eldon Estates as well as a couple of properties within the Lockit Ranches area. So again, the the goal is to be into construction in about two weeks on that, assuming everything falls into place. And then lastly is the Parkway Sediment Basins. You know, I'm gonna be very direct and clear that we have stand that we have stood down on that project. Right now, we've pulled all resources off of that project so that we can get the other two areas, the On Forest and Off Forest and Mount Eldon Estates and Lockit Ranches, that we can get that, those projects into construction. As we've communicated for many months, the Parkway Basins, if that project is ultimately approved by the district and the and the council, that will not go to construction at the earliest this fall. And there are very, there are a lot of complexities to that project. So right now, the focus needs to be getting done as much of the work as possible that we can on and off Forest above the city so that hopefully we can reduce down the sediment and and the major investment that you're making there at Dora as well as the Killip Basins and the other structures that were discussed earlier so that they can actually function, so that the sediment isn't filling them up. So, you know, that's the situation there. And I think everyone's aware that there have been some concerns expressed by those that are adjacent to the Parkway Sediment Basins. There's one, I think there's some confusion about whether they're detention. These are sediment basins. They are not detention nor retention basins. And so, you know, we have, we all will have some work to do there to one, first and foremost, help the council understand what is this project. And ultimately, this is a project that the district's undertaking in support of the city. And ultimately, the city will will manage the maintenance of this project and ultimately, it's your decision if you want to decide to move ahead with this project or not. So there will be, once we get those other projects into construction, we will move back to having those conversations and discussions with you about the details of these projects and and, you know, what that looks like, including cost benefit. And and what is the actual benefit of the project and what is the cost and those kinds of things that of course have to be have to be considered. So but we know know that this is, it is an important element of the overall sediment reduction plan. And so, you know, it warrants having a great deal of discussion about the, you know, what is the value of this project and whether or not to move forward. So with that, what I wanted to bring forward is that you'll be asked by staff and the probably in the the very near term to consider approving the memorandum of agreement between the State Historical Preservation Officer and the Natural Resources Conservation Service. So when you have a federal undertaking, as we, as I discussed, I think the last time we met or I participated in the update, when you have a federal project, you have to go through a process to identify if there are any cultural or historic properties that would be impacted by the project. And and there was an identification that there is a segment of the the Historic Beale Wagon Road within this sediment basin project area. And as a result of that, the NRCS as the federal entity funding this process had to then work with the State Historical Preservation Office to secure a memorandum of agreement. And signatories to that agreement are the City of Flagstaff and the Flood Control District and the Army Corps of Engineers. Because the Army Corps of Engineers, because this is within the likely within the what they have considered historically, the waters of the US falls under their jurisdiction, that they also have are required to go through this process of historical or or archaeological site identification. So in effect, this, the NRCS is the lead agency. So on on behalf of the Army Corps of Engineers, they are pursuing this process with with the State Historical Preservation Officer, SHPO. So that agreement has been reached between the SHPO and the NRCS. And now it's coming to the signators to sign off on the agreement. And so tomorrow at 11:00 AM, the Board of Directors of the Flood Control District will consider approving this memorandum of agreement. And and then it also needs to go to the city council very, very soon, like within you know, this is gonna be probably a special meeting for you to consider this in the very short term, as in the next several days. Because that process then underlies the Army Corps of Engineers then being able to to sign off on the Section 404 permit that we also need from the Army Corps to be able to move to construction. So that 404 permit, it, everything has been submitted to the Army Corps. We secured the signatures that we needed to secure to be able to move forward. Everything has been submitted to them. And once it's approved by the city and the district, then it then that approval document, that document, that memorandum of agreement will go to the Army Corps. They will then part, that will be part of their review of the documentation. And then the expectation is, we've had again, very good working relationship with the Army Corps, that they will then move forward, hopefully with approving what's called a Nationwide Permit 37. The Natural Resources Conservation Service, because they do work with that throughout the nation, they hold a Nationwide Permit for work within the waters under the jurisdiction of the Army Corps of Engineers. So that's what we're pursuing on behalf of NRCS is this Nationwide Permit. So complicated, sounds a bit complicated. It is a lot of moving parts. But we're very getting very close to both having secured the approval from the State Historical Preservation Office as well as the Army Corps of Engineers. And that that obviously, we have to have those two approvals before we can move to construction on any of the projects above the city, both on and off Forest.
Lucinda, this is Andy. Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I don't want to arm wrestle you any longer. We're, we've kind of done enough of that with one another. But I just wanted to butt in a bit and and give a city update. So Andy Bertelson, Water Services Director. So when Lucinda said earlier, we had called off the resources for this Parkway sediment basin, construction resources. Clearly, there are a lot of administrative resources at play right now. And just like everything, it's complicated. And so just prior to this meeting, Scott and Sam and I walked in on the conversation with Mark Rivas, our Historic Preservation Officer. He has just gotten a letter from the Historic Preservation Office and we are determining if we can sign that administratively through the city manager's process or if it does need to come to the city council. So we're working on that right now. And so we'll give you an update on that in the near future. But in essence, cultural resources, the Army Corps of Engineers, and you all know a bit about the Army Corps of Engineers, just from the Rio de Flag project, it's it's a process that we need to work through, needs to know that no cultural resources are being negatively impacted with this project prior to issuing a 404 permit. 404 permits allow use of work in that flood plain. So sorry to interrupt you, Lucinda. That's the process we're working through right now. So in terms of construction resources, we, the city, at least at the staff level, are very happy that those On Forest measures and those that work in Mount Eldon Estates get the resources where they need to be right now. Those clearances are in process and and we've made a lot of progress. When I say we, I mean, Lucinda and the Flood Control District, but we're a team, right? And now we're working through those administrative processes through the Parkway Sediment Basin process. Greg and I, Scott and others were involved where we, like we had noted before, a lot of hurdles per project. This one has a few. We're working through those and we're pushing pretty hard to work work through those. Sometimes we run over them. So anyway, sorry to interrupt you, Lucinda. I just kind of wanted to clarify that and give an update on the city process of where we are with it. So thank you.
Thank you, Andy. And certainly, it's the city's decision how they treat that process. But there needs to be a signature ultimately on that document. So and and that is critical to being able to move forward with the projects above. But just to be very clear, is that the engineering resources for Parkway Basin are off the project. We've got to focus on finishing those plans above. And so certainly, the city is continuing its processes. But in terms of of engineering and construction, nothing's moving forward. And I think that's important for those who do have concerns in that area, that to understand that, you know, we are, we, that is not moving forward now. That is not what we're discussing. There is going to be, there's a lot more work to undertake and conversations and meetings to undertake before that moves forward, that piece of it, this project were to move forward. So I think that's it. Just back to touch on what Sam shared very about the sandbag refresh. You know, I just want to also point out that both the county and the city are operating with limited resources coming into this season, both for flood prep and flood response. Our current vacancy rate for operators is 35%. And so we are having discussions with the city about how to manage through that dynamic and resources are tight across our organization right now. We are, the intention, we have put out a request to our current JOC contractors as well as our small-scale contractors for assistance. I've actually, I'll say pleading with them to step forward and help the community. We need their support in from things for, you know, just like transporting the sandbags, getting them unloaded, offloaded into the neighborhood. So where where I'm hopeful that we will have a set of contractors who will step forward and and other businesses within the community that can help both with that and like placing sandbags at at people's homes who who have the functional needs. So and and that is a key strategy because we just don't have the resources to fulfill all all of that that work this coming this coming season. We have made every effort to secure both the city and the district, to secure Conservation Corps crews. And we're being told they don't expect to have any crews available at all. And that's been pretty much a continuous message. We hoped it would become more positive, but unfortunately, it has not. Historically, we have used the, I'll say historic pre-COVID. We use the DOC crews through the Department of Forestry and Fire Management, DFFM, and we are reaching out to to DFFM and to see if they may be available. Very unlikely they'd be available for flood prep because I think it's expected we'll have a fires, pretty significant fire season this year. But could they be available to help with response as well? So we'll make that outreach. We've had some preliminary discussions there. We need to follow up. But again, their first task always has to be fighting fires. That's that's their primary role. And so, so, you know, the goal is to accomplish all of this. But it's it's gonna, there are gonna be some real challenges this year and we need for the community to understand, we are facing these challenges. And there are a lot of reasons for that. And, you know, we're trying to chip away at some of those reasons as well. But, you know, those challenges are real and we will need to work through those. So I think that's it. I want to thank everyone. We are, you know, again, we're we're working together to be prepared for this year. And at all levels, Andy and I will be conducting the the Incident Command Team Meetings over the next month to two months to prepare that, as will Wes Deason with the Emergency Operations Center Operations and And they did a very good job with after-action effort. And we've identified where are the things that we need to improve. And everybody's got their task and working through those. So again, we'll continue to work hard to be prepared. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lucinda. Do you have any questions, Council, before we move on to Communications? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Lucinda. The call center, what kind of system is in place or going to be in place for tracking the phone calls? And will some sort of number or something be given to people when they call so that they feel confident that their concern is being handled?
So, just, and thank you, because Sam had wanted me to speak to the Salesforce system. So, I mean, one of the discussions we're having is going to be the process of staffing the call center, and what that process is going to look like. But the tracking mechanism that we used first time last year was the Salesforce software. And we're making, we're working right now with both Salesforce and the company that supports the use of that product called Coastal Cloud to make some improvements to that. But the beauty of the current system is that pretty much anywhere, anyone that has access to the internet can get to a webpage. So, meaning if someone takes a call, they can get to, through web access, can fill out the needs form. And there's a very detailed needs form that goes with it to identify what is that individual's specific needs. So, you know, depending upon what circumstances, you know, they, you know, experience with flooding. And so those needs are tracked, and there is a system by which those needs are identified, and then communicated out through work orders, a work order system, to the parties that then will complete that work, in effect. That's the system. So, so that system's there, we're making some necessary improvements to that system. I think, you know, we are going to have to work, again, staffing that call center is a major lift, and that's going to be something we're going to need. You know, both the city and county, and we've really got to step up. I think we've largely staffed that for three years. And it's going to be important that city resources help staff that. Takes a lot of time and effort. And we'll do, you know, the training with those individuals so that they know how to fill out the form. It's pretty, it's pretty straightforward. So tracking that, back to the AFN, yes, we do know, we have a list of those individuals that have requested service prior. We utilized that list actually last year, and proactively reached out to them and identified if they had, you know, and worked with them if they had sandbags that needed to be replaced, that type of thing. If we have the resources, that is the intent to do that again this year, is to do that, and, you know, support that effort. So, but in terms of, you know, if people have very specific issues related to their property, that, something that comes up beyond what, but I'll say 98% of what calls come in are captured on that needs list. And we refined that through last year. And then, you know, if someone calls in, if they've had damage, they want a damage assessment done by the city, you know. And probably 95% of the calls did come from city residents. I will also tell you, having gone through the Schultz experience over, you know, four years of flooding, that the first year is always the worst year. And certainly, last year was an exceptionally, you know, challenging year with the level of flood events, the size, not the number, but the size of flood events we had. And also that, you know, there were a lot of people out there who still didn't believe that it was going to flood. And so, you know, good or bad, we've turned a corner. And I think we will see people, hopefully, now will take seriously rehabbing, you know, refreshing their sandbags and doing what they know they need to do to mitigate impacts to their, to their homes. And so I think we will actually see, unless we have a really significant event, I think we'll actually see less activity this year. I think we can see, you know, what we saw with Schultz was a lot less activity. Even though we had, we had done some mitigation, but frankly, very limited mitigation. We didn't start any, you know, we had some mitigation projects we had done in 10, well, very little in 10, in 11 and 12, but the real serious mitigation wasn't even started until 13.
Thank you, Lucinda. I think we're going to go on with some of the communications, but yeah, appreciate.
But anyway, you'll see a transition in that as well, I think. We should, would expect that.
That's good to hear. Thank you, Ms. Langley.
All right, thank you.
All right, hello.
Hello.
A little echo there. Mayor and Council Sarah Langley, Public Affairs Director. I'd like to wrap up our presentation with a brief communications update. So since our last presentation to you, we've had several communications outputs in the last month or so. A few weeks ago, we released an e-newsletter updating residents to the start of the construction work that Christine covered for the Cedar to Dorthea project. And we also included in that e-newsletter an update from the Flood Control District on the sediment reduction projects that they're leading. We went door-to-door to issue a flyer on that same Cedar to Dorthea construction work to homes in the immediate area and homes a little bit outside of the area to make sure everyone's aware of what all that construction is for. That, a PDF of that flyer is in your agenda packet, in case you're curious to take a look at it. And then, last output, Samantha Victor, our Community Engagement Specialist, and Adam Mialy in Public Works, were able to put together a great video on the Killip project that Scott highlighted. So I'd like to play that video for you now. It's a short one, it's only about a minute long. Get that queued up here. So that was that video. And just a brief overview of things that we've done in the past month. In terms of what is in production right now, we're working on a feasibility study-focused newsletter that'll go out this Friday.
2/22/2022 for our City Council Work Session on Tuesday.
Sorry, that's our last update. That is on YouTube. All right, sorry about that. So yeah, as I was saying, our next e-newsletter will go out on Friday. It'll feature a two-page overview of the feasibility study with some diagrams and pictures to make it really clear, you know, what the feasibility study is talking about. And then, as Julie mentioned, we'll also link to the full report and full exhibits in case residents would like to take a look at that. And then, in the near future, as the team touched on, we'll be working on a broad communications plan for the monsoon sandbags refresh effort. That'll include a lot of different communications avenues, whether it be our e-newsletter, mailers to everyone in the impacted area, social media, we have Nextdoor new this year, so that allows us to target specific neighborhoods, so that'll come in handy, I'm sure. So yeah, we are looking forward to get that message out there, and we'll keep you updated. That concludes the team's presentation, so I will turn it over to you for a discussion and questions you may have.
Thank you. We do have a couple public participants that I'd like to take at this point. We'll start with Sharon Tucksbury-Bloom.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Sharon Tucksbury-Bloom, I'm a resident in the area, and I brought a prop. It's straight from my front yard, there's plenty to spare. So what I wanted to do today is, I know you got a lot of information, but I want to give you the resident perspective and give you some important data, and put all of this into context and plain language for what this means if you actually live in the area. So most of this is just going to be related to the 2022 sandbag refresh, which you got an update on. So I brought this sandbag, and I will make it available to you if you would like to feel it, try to lift it, anything else that you want to know. Today, I went next door, and I counted my next-door neighbor's wall, sandbag wall. They have a conservative estimate of 1,575 sandbags. And this is not one of the ones that's at the end of the street that are so famous for having so many sandbags. Every single one of those sandbags was put there by hand, by them, or a few of their friends. They are middle-aged, and so they do not qualify under the AFN, the Access and Functional Need definition. I didn't count my own sandbags, because we just invested in a more permanent solution. To date, we have spent $16,105 on a permanent solution to build a masonry wall and a floodgate to protect our property. This was all out-of-pocket expense. We do pay in addition for flood insurance, but sandbag, masonry walls and other preventative measures are not covered by flood insurance. The rest of my neighbors are stuck with sandbags. On Grandview specifically, there are 42 houses that have sandbags in front of them. I went to a neighbor that had a shorter front area and counted their sandbags as well, and they had 300 sandbags. So very conservatively, I would say that there's at least 300 sandbags on average. There's 42 homes, I'll do the math for you, that's 12,600 sandbags. I know from watching these sandbag refreshes happen that most people on the street do not qualify under AFN. And most people don't know that service is available. I went on the website for both the city and the county before this meeting to search out the term AFN, try to find any information about who qualified for help with their sandbags. You literally can't find a definition of access and functional need on the city's website or the county's website. There's no other information about how to get those services. And I do have the definition, which I found from another organization, but I'm about to run out of time.
You, please tell us the definition.
Thank you. So from a similar local government that did define it on their website, they said that persons with access and functional needs are those individuals with function-based needs related to a restriction or limited ability to perform activities normally considered routine, that may require assistance before, during, or after a disaster or an emergency. Now, I would contend that lifting 300 sandbags is not an activity that is normally considered routine. So I find it very challenging that all of us residents who don't have a functional disability are considered fully capable of lifting and replacing 300 sandbags ourselves.
Thank you, Sharon.
And I welcome any other questions that you might have.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So you said that there wasn't a definition or anywhere that you could see where someone could request help if they met the definition of AFN on either the city or the county's website? Does that include the flood control website as well?
When I looked at the museum flood control page, what they do say is, if you need help, contact the call center. Now, we just heard that if you contact the call center, they will ask you screening criteria questions that will help determine whether or not you qualify under AFN. But there's no information about the fact, and this got very confusing during the flooding for two reasons. One, people who would qualify didn't know that this was available specifically for them. And then, two, people who thought, well, there's no way they could think that I'm going to lift 1,000 sandbags by myself, would call the call center saying, I need help, but then they would find out that they don't qualify under AFN, so they don't qualify for help. And so then they got a lot of confusion of, well, you told me to call the call center, you said that you had these resources.
Vice Mayor.
And this question is, I guess, for staff. Have there been any discussions about what to do in this case? And any suggestions for resources available? As I understand it, the volunteer days, the volunteer days are to address individual needs, individuals that qualify under AFN guidelines, I believe. But what about in these other instances?
And I can clarify from my perspective before we hear from staff. I know I did get help from volunteers on volunteer days with general things. It kind of was all pitch-in, but certainly priority was given to people with AFN. And then, a lot of residents had already, you know, done the physical labor themselves or found friends before the Saturday volunteer days.
Thank you, Sam, do you want to?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll actually defer to Lucinda to start. I saw you hopped on there, Lucinda, if you want to kick it off, and I can gladly fill in any gaps along the way.
So Sharon is correct that the priority is given to AFN. However, the way that we've been able to stage it previously, when we had more resources available, particularly when the first year, the vast majority of bags, the overwhelming vast majority of sandbags were placed by the Arizona Conservation Corps crews, ACE, and the DFFM crews. Coming into the refreshes the last two years, we've had some of those resources, less of those resources, but we did have some of those resources. And we then utilized, and those were all largely focused on the AFN. And then, the volunteer efforts were focused on those that needed support that didn't qualify under the AFN. This year, we've got, like I mentioned, we have a whole nother level of challenge, because those resources that we've historically gone to are not available, and appear that they're not going. So we're going to, we're actually asking landscaping contractors, other contractors who have labor forces, temp services, who have labor forces that could potentially help with AFN, the AFN. And then, then mobilizing volunteers to assist with others. And recognize that you may have 1,000 bags in front of your house. If you've been refreshing throughout, you don't have to replace all 1,000 again this year. So, you know, but there are some number always that deteriorate, no doubt. You know, there's, there are going to be a certain number that deteriorate. So, but obviously, we do expect people to call on family and friends, and, you know, their kid's school team, and whatever other mechanisms they have to gain support. This is a disaster, and the resources, you know, we need everyone to pitch in and help. And the more people that help, the more people that can be helped. But the city and district, you know, we But the city and district, you know, we have legal limitations. We have other limitations in terms of what we should and can be doing, you know, on private property and the resources available to do it.
Thank you. Lucinda, Vice Mayor, you have a question?
Thank you, Lucinda. I would just like to reiterate what I said earlier about time being of the essence in terms of getting everything staged. And, and I think that the mayor makes an excellent point. If we can get this done before NAU is out, that would be very helpful.
I appreciate the comments. Again, we, we totally understand that the concerns out there. Lucinda brings up great points as we work through this process. Again, our goal is to try and help as many people as we possibly can at this point. However, realistically, that does come down to, unfortunately, most of the time, the access and functional needs. Last year, we had a pretty substantive list that we had just in the refresh project. What we saw was after we saw the flood events, we went back in and we utilized volunteer events to try and support those who didn't fall within the access and functional needs list. And I think many of you volunteered on those days. So we've done our best to try and balance that out. However, there is limited resources. I know we keep going back to that, and unfortunately, as of Fri, this Friday, our Public Works team alone will be down over 40%. So it's, it's just the reality of what we have. It's not an excuse. But we are definitely pushing. At no point have we slowed down. And I hope that everybody knows that we are going to continue pushing forth. I've been out in the streets on this for the last three years. I understand. I've seen. I've lived it. I get it. But we're going to do our best to try and get as much done as possible in, in a timely fashion. But I'll, I'll hand it over to Scott.
No, thank you, Sam and Lucinda. I appreciate the comments. And Sharon, we've met a number of times, and I appreciate you bringing perspective from a resident's viewpoint. It's critical. I, I think what I also want to underscore is that the guidance in terms of what we're recommending for emergency short-term measures really hasn't changed, and it's likely not going to change again this season. So, you know, if as a homeowner, you recognize there's, you know, a, a bag of sandbags that's X-wide and Y-tall, it's probably a very similar setup as long as you're comfortable with that. So, you know, if, if there's a modification to that that you'd like to request or you think there's something you'd like to do different, I think that's something we certainly could try to accommodate. That's what we're talking about with our short-term refresh program. But right now, we still have at King Street a stock of sandbags ready to go, and there's a sand pile, and the county's done a great job of maintaining that throughout the entire event. Some of the pre-filled bags that will be scheduled for delivery, you know, if we set them out tomorrow, it's too soon. You know, they'll deteriorate on the street. They'll get damaged. That coordinated effort is part of that refresh. But those resources that are coming, such as staging sandbags on the street corners that are most impactful, those are parts of the effort. But I guess I'd like to just understand a little bit better the question of how do we communicate the resources? Is there something in specific that you're hearing that, that we're not communicating clearly? Where to get sandbags or how to get them? Or is it just simply, you know, we're overwhelmed with how to refresh? I'd just like to drill a little bit more into that question and make sure we're really providing the best answer.
In my mind, it is specifically when residents can expect bags to be delivered onto their streets, when cleanup efforts for spilled bags are going to happen.
Got it.
When dumpsters will be available. And then to, as close as we can to letting them know, okay, we're going to start first week of May, second week of May, whatever, so that we all can start planning and they can start recruiting friends and family, and we can start recruiting volunteers.
Excellent. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for the clarification. And I think really that refresh discussion and the roles and responsibilities of the county flood control district and the city that Sam and Lucinda spoke to, that is that exercise that we're wrapping up right now. And, and we know we have resource challenges, and we know we have staffing challenges. But, you know, we will have a calendar put together. Well, when those pallets will arrive on corners and our solid waste team will deliver dumpsters, just as we've done in the years past, where sandbags go, where used sand goes. We will schedule sweepers with streets immediately following those efforts as available. All of those pieces that we've seen in the past will be in play. And the specific date, I think, is the request. We'll be certain to get a calendar put together, so that it is predictable. But really, in, in our opinion and kind of our discussions, I know it doesn't seem early, but we're right on schedule to get to, you know, the most likely time that this is appropriate outside of snow season and right in this sweet spot, right before the winter, or excuse me, the, the summer months and the monsoon preparation. So I'm feeling good where we're at, but we, we are definitely trying to move 25 projects at one time.
Thank you. And I will note that, are we going to be, I mean, I know this is going to be staged and bags would be, you know, deteriorate between now and then, but can we get a big dumpster out there so that people can start clearing it out before sandbags are available potentially? Or is this, I'm, I'm just thinking, because of how much work it takes to get the sand out of there and then sand back, if, you know, a dumpster could be out in the street that people can just start clearing the area before an expected day.
Yeah.
I, I just, yeah, I don't know if that's...
I think Sharon whispered in my ear at the same time. Right now, they're wet, soggy, heavy. I, I think our solid waste team in Public Works has been very responsive. And, you know, when we know and we need to put, whether it's a roll-off dumpster or maybe a smaller dumpster in strategic locations, we also balance that with, you know, illegal dumping and couches and other issues. But we will accommodate those items. And I think as we get closer to these structured volunteer days, and maybe we hear from, you know, a group of neighbors that wants to have a refresh on maybe a weekend that's not volunteer-coordinated, but it's their own, we will support that effort as we have in the past and make certain that, you know, they have a place to put those sorts of things that's as convenient as possible.
Yeah, that'd be great because, you know, not everything has to be all, all, you know, government-run volunteer days. We, we can rally a lot of people. I know everyone on council can help to get the word out, to help to organize, to do it. And potentially just, yeah, having that support out there, the dumpster would be helpful for us to potentially get a little head start.
Yeah, and clearly, it's in our best interest to have dumpsters support that because that's where it belongs, and that's how it gets to the landfill properly. And it's not sitting in the street or on a neighbor's property. The key is strategic timing. And so that it's not, you know, placed two weeks prior and it sits there for two weeks after. It's really got to be a short window. So that's a small logistics piece that Sam and the team will work on and, and we'll make certain that we support those efforts.
Awesome. Thank you. And, yeah, Sharon, is there something you would like to respond to?
I just really want to clarify one thing because Lucinda was mentioning that not all the bags need to be refreshed. And that is true. There are some that are still in decent shape. But every bag needs to be moved in order to reconstruct the walls in a way that we can feel confident in. And in particular, because now by year four, or whatever it is, on these walls, usually the ones that are degrading the worst are the ones that are actually on the bottom. And so you have to really unconstruct the wall and then reconstruct the wall with the best bags and the new bags. And so in terms of the actual physical labor that is involved, we are still moving thousands of bags, even if we don't actually have to transport thousands of bags onto our property.
Thank you, Sharon. All right. With that, we do have another public participant online that would like to tap in here.
Mayor, we have Don Rodriguez. Don, you can go ahead and unmute and offer your comments now.
Hello, everybody. There I am. Good to see everybody. Nice to be here. Mayor, council, vice mayor, I can see Becky smiling. I can't see my clock, so. I did not prepare a statement today because I've never been at this point in my life where I couldn't get answers, and it's very frustrating, and I don't even really know what to say. So I've been jotting down notes. I promised the council I would speak to, communicate to residents with them. So tonight, I invited hundreds of people, and every single person was angry, angry. I, I just quoted some stuff. Challenges are real, and we need to work through them. This is true. Who are we working with, council? The district is the city and county. I am not confident in the call center. Someone just asked Scott, I believe, asked for an example that we're not communicating clearly. So since the last update, Julie from JE Fuller said that they had a hydrology report. The city had it, and it was up to them on how they released it. This is just one example. I got tons of examples. I should write a book, right? So one example, the Fuller report. Oh, I emailed you guys. Every single one of you guys on the council. I don't know. Now, it's been so long. It was Sarah. Someone that I've never heard of sent me an email and said to contact the county. And of course, they sent me the information, the email for like the call center, right? I still haven't heard back from the county. So who are we communicating with? I always tell people it was a privilege to be a part of this disaster because I look for the blessings, and one of them was being on this team. I'm proud of every single one of you for trying, right, to show up to work. I know how frustrating it is. So I'm not here to offend anyone. I'm not here to work against anyone. I'm here to ask for help and ask questions. We teach kids to ask questions. When they grow up and they ask questions and they get attacked, that, that, that's not good. That's going against everything that our society believes in. How can, how can I help residents to build trust in the district if I can't trust the district? And I do, and I say, "They're doing this, and they're doing this, and they're doing this." But I, I'm not getting answers, and I just want answers. And I have a lot to say, which I probably shouldn't tonight, about the sandbag stuff you guys are all talking about. But was that the timer?
Yes, it was. Thank you. But we do have a question for you from Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Don. The hydrology report, that's specifically what you're looking for?
Well, it is specifically, but like I said, there's a lot, but I was, you know, somebody wanted an example, so I thought I'd give a specific example that I could speak to personally.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is there anyone on staff that has anything to say about when or whether that report is going to be available, or maybe it already is?
Yeah, Scott Orton, again, Public Works Director. And you're speaking, I believe, of the JE Fuller modeling report, and that is a county-led document. So I think it is appropriate if Lucinda wants to ask about that. The feasibility study is a city-led effort, and that was the one that Sarah spoke to, Sarah Langley out of our information office. And that is the one that will be released likely in the next week or so. It is in its final review, and it will be not only linked in summary form, but you'll be able to find a link that will get you to the entire feasibility report soon. Sarah, did you have a, a timeline or a date on that? Friday, Friday of this week, Don, on the feasibility side. Okay. And then, Lucinda, if you had any comments on the modeling?
Yeah, the, the updated existing conditions modeling that JE Fuller is, has been undertaking that utilized the new light R that was flown last November, that is in peer review currently. And the expectation is that within the next week or so, we will be in a position to begin communicating on that. So we, there's a number of different parties that are reviewing that, and it's going through its process. And, and I'll be working with JE Fuller on, on the communication pieces and, and sharing those, of course, with, with Sarah.
Thank you, Lucinda. Don, you had, did you have an additional question?
Yes. Well, it's the same question. So I sent the email the day after I heard Julie from JE Fuller say that the city had the report. I can go back and find out exactly the name of it. But I sent the email out the day after she mentioned it, so it should have been fresh on everybody's mind. But she said that the city had it, and I do realize that the county paid for it. But the city has it, and, I mean, we're trying to be partners with the county. I didn't get a response at all. At least the city was nice enough to ping pong me back to the county. So if they're not going to work with us, can't the city just, I mean, you guys have the stuff. Can't you just give it out, even though the county paid for it?
It's in peer review. There, there is a scientific, you know, process, an engineering process that we go through to ensure that different perspectives on, on how you engineer these measures are considered in that process, Don. And so it's important, it's really important to give the engineers the space to do what they need to do and do it well for, for your benefit, right?
Julie's here too, too, as well, if you wanted to.
Yeah, Julie can, and, and Julie is not with JE Fuller. She has her own firm, just to make...
Hi, Don. So my firm is Peak Engineering, and we've completed the feasibility study. In previous council meetings, I likely said that we've been working with Coconino County and that Coconino County was updating their modeling and that we are eager to see that, and that's being done by JE Fuller. That is not something that I have actually received yet because the, the county, as Lucinda said, is going through the peer review. But the feasibility study is going out.
Yeah, Don, do you have another question?
Well, I'd just like to say that I understand. Thank you for explaining that to me, Julie and Lucinda. It would have been nice if I didn't have to like feel like a fool for asking this question to somebody. Like, the question was, you know, what example is about not communicating clearly? It would have been nice if somebody had communicated that with me clearly a month ago when I asked the question. And I think that's just an example of communication, and that's what I'm talking about tonight. I, I wish I had time to talk about all the other sandbag stuff, but that's how residents feel, and that's all that I'm bringing to the attention. So I'm glad we fixed that one question tonight, but I'm not the only person that has questions. I think most people have turned their questions to anger, and that's why we need to do a better job and not say like, as, also, another thing, "As in the past," I just don't like that phrase because I think we're doing a lot better this year, just like Lucinda said. Maybe last year was the hardest year. But don't say "as in the past" because that's why we're doing better this year because in the past, we weren't doing better. So I'd just like to say thank you to everybody for your help.
Thank you, Don, and thank you for helping to communicate and organize the neighborhood to make sure that we are, are on par and continuously trying to do better. Because that's really the whole team, I feel, is really working hard to continuously do better, be better. Getting this website up was a good lift, and, yeah, we'll, we'll continue on. So, thank you, Don. All right, council, we have any other questions? Staff, VM?
Thank you, Mayor. Sarah, two quick questions for you. If someone is not already on the e-newsletter list, how do they get on that list? And can you give the museum flood website address again?
Certainly. The website is museumfloodprojects.com. And then, once you go there, there's a tab at the top that says "Stay Connected." Once you click on that, you'll see a form that you can enter all your information, and then you'll be on our newsletter list. We also share that list every couple of weeks with the county to make sure that we're keeping our list the same and that people who sign up with us will also receive communications from the flood control district.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Thank you, everyone, for the update. And, yeah, I'm glad we're seeing a lot of this progress happening, especially through Sunnyside right now. It's been a big lift. So, thank you. All right. With that, meeting adjourned and then called to order again at the notice of the public that city council may vote to go into executive session for legal advice on the... on the agendized item. And that item is the consideration and approval, council vacancy appointment process and term. City Clerk?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Stacy Clark. Um, so tonight is a follow-up discussion regarding the process and timeline to fill the anticipated council vacancy. Um, after the meeting last week, I finalized the process and the timeline based on your feedback. And, um, included in your packet was a timeline that laid out, um, kind of the timeline that we're expected to, um, follow and anticipated, uh, schedule. I want to know, I did my best to schedule around your existing appointments. Um, but as you know, our timeline is, is pretty tight. Um, I think I, I hit most of, uh, most of us with, um, our open times. So I do have the timeline available to put up on the screen if you would like. We can go through that. Um, but like I said, it was attached to your staff summary. What you see on the screen here is just kind of a, a brief recap of that. It just does not go into the specifics on the dates of, of our meeting. Um, all of that information in terms of meeting dates will go out with our applicant packet so that everybody that is, um, you know, seeking that vacant seat will have the schedule. They'll know what dates they need to set aside, um, for potential, you know, the introductions that we talked about as well as, um, possible interviews with that shorter list. So, um, this evening, um, staff's recommended action for this item is for council to approve the process and the timeline, um, as was outlined in the handouts. And then also approve that per charter, the council appointee will serve a term expiring December 20th, 2022. And that the fourth highest vote getter in the November 2022 election will serve the final two years of the vacated term, which expires in December of 2024. And with that, um, I'm available for any questions, um, comments, um, suggested revisions to the timeline, um, and council action.
Thank you. Questions, Council? Comments? All right. Well, uh, with that, um, it, could you pull up the calendar just so the public can see the timeline?
Of course. Let me see if I can blow that up just a little bit. It is two pages. So I'm happy to kind of scroll through this a little bit.
Yeah, if you could just walk, walk it through, because it's going to be important. Everyone knows the application process, the packet. And so that way we can get, uh, as many people as possible to, uh, apply to the position.
Most definitely. Um, so you'll see on the left-hand side of this timeline, this is the, the days. So our charter indicates that we have 31 days to fill that vacant seat. Um, so you'll see that, you know, just to kind of walk our timeline through, you've, you've got the days, um, count there. But on April 5th, we're going to have our regular council meeting. And at that time, um, we will accept the resignation, um, effective on the date that it was, um, submitted. So we're again, making some assumptions here, but we assume that that resignation date will be April 4th, and council will accept that on April 5th. On Wednesday, April 6th, we will have the applicant packet available. It will be available on our website. This will include instructions for all, um, potential applicants. It will include all of the materials that they might need. And we are asking them to submit their application, a letter of interest, their resume. And as part of the application, we have identified seven questions that we will ask them to answer.
And each question is 250-word response.
Yes. Yeah. And again, those, those instructions will all be outlined, um, in the paperwork that will be available on our website. So moving down in our schedule, on April 12th, um, this is our regular work session evening. Council will meet in an executive session. And at that time, they'll develop, uh, the public interview questions. So this will be for those that we ask to come back for interviews. And, um, we'll have an established list of questions that we'll be asking each of them. Our application deadline will occur on April 20th. It's a Wednesday, and the deadline will be five o'clock P M. We are asking that all applicants submit all of their application materials to me via email. So we'll receive all of those electronically. And again, all of these instructions will be included on our website and the packet materials. Once the, um, application deadline closes, I will be putting together the packets, the application packets, and those will be presented to council on April 21st. And this will hopefully give you enough time to review the application materials that were submitted. Uh, because the following Monday, um, we will have a special meeting where applicants will be, um, per, permitted to give an introduction of themselves. Uh, we've set aside five minutes for each applicant. They can come and talk about their experience, um, opportunities that they want to share with you. It's really their time to highlight themselves and, and express their interest. So that meeting will start at 3 P M. We're going to try to keep our, um, special work sessions consistent with the same times that we're generally meeting as a council. Following those introductions, um, council will, uh, have an executive session where they will kind of debrief those introductions and then, uh, potentially develop a short list, um, for the in-person interviews. The following Tuesday, which is our regular work session, uh, we'll kick off that meeting by announcing who those interviews, um, applicants will be. That way they can get that, you know, scheduled, um, accordingly. That special work session where we will hold those applicant interviews will occur on Thursday, April 28th, again, beginning at three o'clock P M. Following the interviews and any public comment that may be received during that time, um, council will move into an executive session to debrief and, um, go through those interview, those applicants that they interviewed. We've set aside Monday, May 2nd, um, for any follow-up executive session debriefs that might be needed. So again, we hope to, um, be able to kind of move this, this through at that Thursday, April 28th. But if more time is needed, we want to make sure that we hold that time. We've also set aside time for a potential special work session if council wants to bring back, um, any of the applicants for a follow-up interview or additional questions. Now, the difference on that meeting is we will begin at 1 P M. Again, that was, um, intended to allow, again, that extra time for an executive session if needed. And then finally, on, on Tuesday, May 3rd, at our regular council meeting, um, our hope is that we can make the applicant appointment. We can swear them into office and they can take their seat. You'll see here that I've built in a couple of extra days. Again, if more time is needed, um, we can certainly hold accounts, a special council meeting, um, the following Wednesday or Thursday. But ultimately, the deadline to make the appointment is May 5th.
Thank you.
Of course.
And just notice to the public as well that, you know, we, we are obviously taking comments from the public, both written. You also have the ability to chime in verbally at the, uh, regular sessions, not the executive sessions. But, uh, we want to make sure that this is a, a real public process. And, um, also that, uh, I'd like to just make sure that we get the word out as much as possible, not just, you know, on Facebook, but anywhere and everywhere we can to, uh, make sure that the public is aware of what we're doing, how we're doing it, and that we have a, a large application pool, applicant pool.
Absolutely. And I have already started conversations with Sarah Langley, um, on a press release that can go out. And we'll, we'll continue to, to push that messaging as much as we can.
Yep. All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions, Council? All right. And just, uh, just as a point of, do we need to formally vote on this then as each individual piece?
I would ask yes, that both of those points that were on the agenda be.
All right. Then I move to approve the appointment process and timeline.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Um, uh, City Attorney Sterling Solomon does have his hand raised.
Oh, City Attorney. Please jump in.
Thank you so much. I, I actually, it was in regard to your last question, Mayor. And, um, kind of maybe to clarify that a little bit. Stacy, you, um, had indicated what the staff recommendation is. Could you restate that? I wondered if I might, um, provide, um, that as a, at least possible motion for council, um, to consider. Cause I think it was a little bit lengthy, but if you'll state that, I'll type it up real quick.
Sure. Um, so the first, uh, uh, action would be to approve the process and timeline as presented this evening. So that's the first action. And then the second would be to approve, as per city charter, that the council appointee will serve a term expiring December 20th, 2022. And that the fourth highest vote getter in the November 2022 election will serve the final two years of the vacated term expiring in twen, December of 2024.
Of course, Mayor. Um, let me just finish this up. Whatever motion we're going to make is a possibility as well. But something that, uh, could possibly work, I'll just put it in the chat here. Um, and, uh, I'll, that's, that's a potential motion or whichever motion you were going to make there.
All right. I motion to approve the process and timeline as outlined this evening and also approve per charter that the council appointee will serve.
Can we, can we treat those separately, please?
Yes, I'm happy to do that. So scratch that and restarting. Um, I move to approve the process and timeline as outlined this evening. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Aslan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Would you like to have further discussion on the second item?
Yes, I would. Um, I, I have some questions, and I'm frustrated that there aren't other alternatives presented here for us to consider. Um, my biggest question is what happens if we don't even get three candidates on the ballot for November?
So if we don't end up with three or, or more, um, there is always the ability to have write-in candidates. Um, and so we would still hold the election as typical, um, to allow the opportunity for write-in candidates to submit their name for consideration.
Can you bring us through the write-in process a little bit more?
Sure. Um, so anyone who has not submitted signatures and has been determined to not have enough signatures, um, they are not permitted to run as a write-in candidate. Anyone else, however, is, can, can run as a, a write-in candidate, there is paperwork that they have to file with my office, uh, to be considered as an official write-in candidate. A write-in.
So you have to register for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Um, the difference there is that they do not have to go through the formal petition process, um, that others do to have their name printed in the ballot. Write-in candidates do not have their name printed on the ballot. Um, but it is noted in our polling places that we have received official write-in candidates. So there is some notification at polling places that there are write-in candidates available. Write-in candidates are required to receive, um, the minimum number of votes that is equal to the minimum number of signatures required, um, on a petition, you know, that petition filing to qualify for the ballot. So this year, a write-in candidate would have to receive at least 1,602 votes in order to be potentially elected to an open seat. I hope that helps.
And what if that threshold is in, I, I, I apologize for having to game this out, but I, I think it's plausible and reasonable for us to be asking these questions and, and to, uh, be exploring some of these scenarios.
Sure. Not, not a problem. I, I welcome the questions for sure. Um, in the event that they don't reach that threshold, and we still potentially are left with open seats on, um, the council, myself and the city attorney would meet and discuss our options. But, um, you know, there, there are a number of scenarios that could occur. Um, I, but I would, I would, I would like to wait until we're presented with that opportunity. I have not dived in very deep into what our options are if we don't have the requisite number of candidates elected at the election, whether that is the short term or the, the standard four terms. Um, there's a lot that could go into that. And we'll have more information as well on April 4th as to who and how many have qualified for the ballot in November.
So that brings up an interesting point. Um, that I, I would like to have a little bit more time and be on the other side of knowing some of those particulars before having to vote on approving this process here. I'm not satisfied with the process, uh, personally, um, anyway. And, and with, with some of these variables, um, on the table, and some of these questions that will be resolved within the next week or so, it seems prudent to me that we hold off on a motion and a vote for this second part until we know at least a little bit more and have a chance to explore other potential alternatives. I'm just sharing that with you guys.
And if, and if I might offer, if that's the direction of council, we're happy to do that. I want to note, um, just to put it out there, that that will push our, our applicant, the application period out just a little bit. So it could really compress our timeline. Or we might need to consider shortening the, the period of time that the application window is open. Again, we're happy to go forward with whatever council wants to do. This is your process. I just want to note that for consideration is all.
Any other thoughts? I don't want to be the only one opinionating about it.
Mr. Mayor, this is Sterling Solomon, City Attorney. I put a comment in the chat.
Yeah, City Attorney.
Thank you. I, I will say that one question, uh, that you asked specifically about how many, um, qualified electors will have submitted valid nomination papers and petitions before the deadline, which is five o'clock next Monday, April 4th. Um, we will have the answer to that question at 5:01 on next Monday, on April 4th. Uh, however, until then, uh, af, even after that, we won't know, as, as the city clerk has indicated. Um, many of the other, um, answers to, to questions that you may have had here that would require some more research. But as, um, City Clerk Stacy has indicated, we, we'll do that, uh, research and, and get back to you with, uh, answers if, if those are questions the council wants answered.
Thank you, Sterling. Well, I'll give my two cents. I feel a little uncomfortable doing a proceed, a procedural, um, waiting game just to see who is on the ballot. Um, because then it's going to be a little seemingly that we are outlining the rules based on the specific candidates that have on the ballot. And I don't want to have any perception of any, um, lack of process or, um, public process through this. Uh, I'd feel a lot more comfortable nailing it down today without having candidate, specific candidates even discussed or talked about in, in the process.
I completely understand that concern. And I 100% fully agree with you. I'm certainly not suggesting that we wait in order to know who the candidates are. My only concern is that we will, that there will be four candidates to running for the office. And what happens if that's not true? And, uh, just as concerned that there may not be three. So those are the particulars of, of my concerns. It has nothing to do with the individuals. And in fact, as someone who will be turning in signatures, I'm happy to recuse myself from the conversation. Um, I just think we have an opportunity to know slightly more information about the landscape that, that, that we're dealing with if we wait a week. And I think it would be prudent to do so, even though that unfortunately, um, uh, truncates our, our, our other timeline a little bit. Uh, it's a very frustrating situation. Um, and I just want to make sure we're moving forward in the right way and not in the most expedient way.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Well, happy to hear other thoughts. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor. I too am sharing your concerns. And, um, I am ready to move forward with the recommended action tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt again. This is Sterling Solomon, but I believe Councilmember Shimoney had a queue in the chat box, um, along with. but I believe Councilmember Shimoney had a queue in the chat box long before I put my seat.
Councilmember Shimoney, please, and then Councilmember Solis.
Sterling, you are my hero. Thank you, mayor, and thank you, Sterling. Yeah, you know, I, yeah, this is an interesting situation. So I think, I think what I'm hearing from Stacy and from the discussion is that, you know, we need to appoint someone now, and they serve out the remainder of the time prior to the election. To Councilmember Aslan's concerns, you know, let's just say there aren't four candidates or four people being elected, or, you know, that qualify to be elected for this, you know, for positions. At that point, that council would appoint someone to fill the seat. Stacy, am I correct in that thought process?
So... So there's a few, this is where that additional research needs to be done. I would be hesitant to answer that question directly, Councilmember Shimoney, because I think there's a couple of different options or scenarios that could play out in that instance. And so I would, I would ask to have a little bit of time to consult with Mr. Solomon on what counsel options may be in that type of situation. My apologies.
That's okay. And then your clarification, the Councilmember Aslan, about the write-in. Can you just clarify for me? I got a little confused. So if someone pulled papers to run but didn't turn in the required signatures, the minimum, are they qualified to be a write-in candidate?
So as long as they didn't submit those petition sheets to me, and I determined that they did not have enough signatures. So if they pulled paperwork...
Then they do qualify.
Right. If they pulled paperwork and were circulating petitions out in the community, and they determined, say today, that they're just not going to receive the requisite number, they don't meet with me, they don't come in, they don't turn their petition sheets in, in that instance, they would be permitted to be a write-in candidate, either at the primary or the general, depending on what comes forward. Had they come to me, turned in all of their paperwork, and I determined that they didn't have the minimum number needed, at that point, they would not be permitted to be a write-in candidate. And that is laid out in state law.
Okay, so even if they turn in a number less than the minimum, that would disqualify them, is what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay, very interesting. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, for my identification, I will always go back to the charter. So what does the charter says about a situation like this? And I think that the staff recommendation is per city charter, which is on Article 2, Section 10, and I will paraphrase it because I don't have the actual charter in front of me. So in a situation where there is a council vacancy, flagstaff electorate, which are the board voters, will elect the council member to fill that vacancy at the next election as to serve a short term of two years. And I kind of, please, Mr. Solomon, correct me if I'm wrong with my interpretation of the charter. But with that, having the charter in mind, I would recommend, I would go, I would recommend adopting staff recommendation with the two bullet points as presented on screen right now. The council appointee will serve a term expiring December 20, 2022, and the fourth highest vote getter in the November 2022 election will serve the final two years of the vacated term expiring in December 2024.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Is there any further discussion? I'm happy to...
Yeah, I would like to either recuse myself from this vote or abstain, if I may. I don't know if the city attorney can clarify that at all, or if that's a moot point.
Happy to, mayor, mayor and council. Councilmember Aslan, if you abstain, you are going to be counted as a yes vote. If you recuse and step away from the dais, then it will be the remaining six members of council voting, which, for council and the public's information, that would require a 4-2 vote for approval.
I think, if I may, if I'm permitted to, and with your permission, mayor, I'd like to recuse myself from this.
Certainly.
Do I need to physically leave the room?
If you could step away from the dais, that would be preferred. Thank you.
All right. With that, I move to, I'm pulling this up again here. I move to approve, per charter, that the council appointee will serve a term expiring December 20th, 2022, and the fourth highest vote getter in the November 2022 election will serve the final two years of the vacated term expiring in December 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Solis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously.
Thank you, mayor and counsel.
All right. With that, yeah, you can come back up here now, right?
Well, I actually have a question. Is Councilmember McCarthy with us? Does that matter?
No, he had...
He, if I may, mayor and council, he had to step out. He's got family matters that require his presence.
Yeah.
That's perfectly fine. I'm just curious if that affects the vote total and the threshold.
Mayor and council, Sterling Solomon, city attorney, again, with five members of council, it would have required a three-member vote. It was a five, unanimous five vote. That said, the motion still passed.
All right. Well, with that, we're down to agenda item three, public participation. Do we have anyone at this time?
Mayor, we do not.
All right. And we are down to agenda item number four, our informational items, two from mayor, council, and city manager, and future agenda item requests. I'll start on this side of the dais. Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tomorrow is the Flagstaff Sister Cities International Annual Meeting. And on Thursday all morning, council will have the retreat on capital project, five-year capital improvement project programs. And then on Friday, I encourage everyone to show up for the Flagstaff Exchange Club Field of Hope dedication. And I'm humbled to be part of Flagstaff Exchange Club. So the Field of Hope dedication, for everyone's information, is remembering the children that we lost in the last year due to violence. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Sweet?
Just a quick plug, Art Walk is back, and Friday is Art Walk Downtown. So come down and enjoy our local artists and support local business. Other than that, it was a great meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, councilmember. I'll just hop in here. I was really excited yesterday for the first maiden voyage of the CARE team that is now out operational with Terrors Behavioral Health Specialist and a fire EMT helping patrol and respond to 911 calls regarding mental health and substance use issues in our community. And just super excited and want to thank everyone involved. Thank counsel for having us move so quickly on this to make sure it was funded and sending it off. And I'm looking forward to the update. We will see how things are going. With that, I will turn it over to Vice Mayor.
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, mayor. I still, I also want to give a big shout out to the Community Alliance Response and Engagement Team, the CARE team. I was very excited to see them get kicked off, and they've already diverted six calls yesterday. I'm not sure how many they were able to respond to today, but that's six individuals who are receiving better care and more compassionate care. So that's really exciting that they're already having such an impact. And last week, Councilmember Sweet and I were able to attend a couple-day-long retreat for Elevate pre-K in regards to early childhood education and funding. And, and, and yeah, as Councilmember Solis said, this Thursday, there's a five-year capital improvement project retreat that I'm really looking forward to and really doing our best to line up our projects and our efforts with our regional plan and our priority-based budgeting community values. Good meeting today, a good, long meeting today, and thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
You, councilmember. Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you. I don't have anything in particular. I did want to take an opportunity that Councilmember Shimoney took last week to thank our vice mayor for your term of service here with us. Really appreciate you stepping up and standing up for the community for the past two years, and look forward to all the other ways in which you may be serving in the future. I'm going back through my calendar here. We had a nice meeting with the, as I mentioned earlier, the Coconino Plateau Water Advisory Council on Friday, and I think I'll leave it there. Not much else to report.
All right. City manager, do you have anything for us this evening?
No, thank you.
All right. Meeting adjourned.